How are you?
Good.
Good.
Girl, you're killing me. Huh? That's killing me. I like to start on.
Well, that Mr. Chair, so.
Okay, with that, I would like to call the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Genoa Township Board of Trustees to order at six thirty P. M. I ask you please join me for the invocation. Almighty God, thank you for all of the blessings you have bestowed upon each one of us. Recent events have shown great division in the world around us. We ask that you help us break down barriers, heal division, and foster a sense of compassion and understanding by respecting each other's shared humanity, regardless of differing worldviews. Please grant us open hearts and a willingness to listen to others' views. Give us the wisdom to seek common ground and the courage to bridge the divides that separate us, that we may all become peacemakers and live as one in you. In Jesus's name, amen.
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 Now, for the pleasure of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, Clerk Deaton?
Sure. Kavarder. Here. Susie.
Here.
Deaton here, Spiker.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Reiber.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Okay. We have corps. I would like to open the call to the public as of six thirty-two P. M.
Deborah Beatty, I'm going to be talking about something on the agenda, so should I make?
No, we don't have any hearings this evening, so go ahead and speak right at the regular call to the public.
Yes, hello, Deborah Beatty, three one zero nine Pineview Trail. There was one thing on the agenda, the property at Chilson and Brighton Road. And when I read through the packet, you know, when we talked a couple of weeks ago, we heard the discussion about that property and its possibilities of what to do with it, it was going to be doing a minimum to that property, keeping it wild, maybe some trails, trying to keep it undisturbed as much as possible. And then when I see on the packet, it's got things like a playground, bike park, disc golf. And I'm not sure why those are in there. Maybe that's just something somebody put in there and didn't know where we were headed with this. But I'm not happy about that because that changes the whole concept of keeping this a wild area. And that's my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
Janine Iyer, two three nine six Brighton Road in Howell. Thank you all for your service to our community, first of all. Appreciate you all. I'm here to talk about the first item for consideration, a request for approval to purchase cameras and radar speed signs for dedicated use in Genoa Township to be operated and maintained by the Livingston Sheriff's Office. Now, I would like to learn more about this, but I find radar speed signs very helpful. I see them around schools and on the way to downtown Brighton. But I'm a little nervous about the purchase of cameras. And what is the purpose of having cameras in our community? It's kind of, it sounds like a police state or something, you know? It's kind of strange, and so I'm wondering why cameras. I mean, radar speed signs, I think those are very useful. You know, my, and I guess my priorities for, you know, being a citizen in Genoa Township is to maintain rights and freedoms, and that includes privacy rights. Also, being fiscally conservative, you know, that's something that I really would call all of you to strive for. And I don't know if the Livingston County Sheriff's Office wants these devices. I just wonder why Genoa Township is paying for it, and I'm interested in learning more about that. And then the last priority I would say is maintaining a largely rural and residential community. And that speaks to, you know, the other consider item on this list. I live very near Chilson and Brighton Road. I'm two miles away. And also with the whole south of I ninety-six on Latson, I really wish that would revert to like what it was before twenty twenty, which is kind of like a five-acre country lot for residences. You know, I feel like this is a haven for us, you know, a respite from, you know, the concrete jungle of other communities. And so that's, those are the priorities that I really wish that you all would strive for. And so I just wanted to let you know. And again, I thank you for your service. I appreciate each one of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Janine. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, I will close the call to the public at six thirty-six P. M. With that, I will entertain a motion regarding our consent agenda this evening.
Got a question on consent agenda. This is just for items number one and items number two, to either approve or not approve those two items. Is that correct?
Yes, without having open discussion here on the floor.
For items one and two?
Just for items one and two. Which is just the payment of bills in the minutes.
Okay, I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. At this time, I would ask for a motion regarding the regular agenda for this evening's meeting.
I'll move approval of the regular agenda as presented.
Second.
I make, can I make another movement different?
You can.
You can request an amendment?
I would like to request an amendment.
Okay.
Does that come before or after this?
It should have come before, but you can do it now.
I would like to request that we amend agenda to take item number five, which is the Parks Development K-two Environmental Consulting, and move it to discussion. We've had it there before, but reading the packet and the contents of that, Deb Beatty, I think, recalled the conversation here the same way I did, that we had talked about just leaving it natural, leaving it the way it was before it got overgrown. And like her, I'm also concerned that I see on there things like disc golf and parking lot and all this type of stuff, and that's not kind of what I had in mind that we had talked about. We didn't vote on it. But I would just like this to be clearer, the, I guess, the proposal from K-two Environmentaling, because I thought that we kind of said, yeah, yeah, let's just keep this thing rural. And now I'm seeing all kinds of proposals to develop. You know, even a parking lot has got to be four, eight, ten spots on there if you're going to make it just a walking trail.
This almost sounds like discussion that should be had while we're discussing item number five.
We have the gentleman here. I think some of that is a little bit of boilerplate language. If you are going to seek a grant, you do have to consider alternatives, all alternatives.
I understand that, but what do we need a grant for? We don't even know what we need a grant for, just to clear the land? I mean, I'm just making, I'm making a motion to move item number five off the agenda to discussion.
I would agree with Todd, though. I mean, we can leave it on as agenda item five. We can discuss. We can clarify if we're not happy with it. We can absolutely table it. We do not need to proceed with it. But if we leave it on five, if all of our questions are answered, then we can choose to vote on it or not.
Okay, I would be all right with that. So we have a motion to approve the regular agenda in a second already?
Correct.
We do. So I would ask for any further discussion, but I believe we've just had that. So I will go ahead and proceed to ask all those in favor of the motion. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carry. Action item number three is the consideration of a request for approval to purchase cameras and radar speed signs for dedicated use in Genoa Township to be operated and maintained by the Livingston County Sheriff's Office. We have Lieutenant Chad Sell here this evening, and he will answer any and all of your questions, really sheriff-related, specifically on these two, but he's happy to answer anything else while he is here for you as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you, would you like Officer Lieutenant Sell to give us some background first? Or do you just want to ask him some questions? Can you provide just a little bit of, yeah, background? If you don't mind, speak right into the mic so those at home can really hear.
I'll slide it over here. So Chad Sell, Livingston County Sheriff's Office, been a lieutenant for the last couple of years there. Been with the Sheriff's Office for twenty-one years. I had brought forward this project with Mr. Spiker in regards to potentially purchasing cameras and obviously also engaging him in the radar signs. He brought that up to me. So the radar signs is the easy conversation, so I'll talk about that one first. So radar signs, the Sheriff's Office, we have several radar signs that we put them up around the county. It's mostly on a request basis. That is subdivisions, bus stop areas, school zones, construction zones, all of that stuff. So when it comes down to the radar signs itself, if you, there's eight million different companies out there that sell radar signs. There's fancy ones that you can pull up next to and operate with a computer via Bluetooth. There's other ones you can plug into a computer, set everything you want. The couple of things that I had suggested was if you found them, we can deploy them around the township for you, or you can deploy them around the township for yourself. Either one, we don't mind maintaining them. I just gave a couple of suggestions. There's this thing that we refer to as inattentional blindness while we're driving. I've, and you have all done the same thing, I can guarantee it, driven home from work or driven home from a board meeting, and you don't remember how you got there. So that means you didn't look at any signs, you didn't look at any stop signs. You just knew how to get home, and you stopped at all the stop signs, stopped for the traffic lights, but mentally you were thinking about the board meeting, work, family, things like that. So that's kind of the big thing that I would suggest for the township, is not getting permanently affixed signs because inattentional blindness kicks in. If you put a speed sign on Grand River, that's a radar sign. People that aren't from here that drive down Grand River will see it and they'll slow down. But when you and I drive Grand River every day, I don't see half the signs that are there anymore, especially after patrolling for twenty-one years. So that's why I always suggest doing portable signs, is that you can move them to target areas and things like that. The other hard part is, is the subdivisions, is that, you know, one of the hardest things is, is that we have the community that grew up here, and we have the transplants that have moved out here. A lot of people don't understand private roads. There isn't a lot of enforcement that we can do on private roads because of the simple fact that the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code doesn't allow us to do that. We can still enforce drunk driving, reckless driving. The reckless driving threshold is not the kid that's doing fifteen over. Reckless driving is willful and watten, so that's very difficult threshold to meet. But that's the hard part when it comes to these subdivisions is, is that when they put up their wooden sign that says fifteen miles an hour, that's not really a thing. And that's kind of the hard thing that we try to do to educate the public because I'm sure the public calls you as much as they call us to complain about speed. So we really try to give priority to the public roadways first. And then if, in the gist of it, if we get multiple calls from a subdivision, we'll also put it out there in the subdivision. There's a couple of different versions that we have. We have some that don't actually even display a speed because you'll all laugh, but some people try to see how high they can get the number when they come up on it. The other thing, too, is, is that when people come up on the sign, they automatically slow down. Well, we record that, obviously, that they slowed down type of thing. So it's, it's one of those things. There's, there's no good way to solve a traffic problem. There really isn't. And then, you know, there's also obviously the complaints of, you know, Hughes Road. We sit on Hughes Road in the twenty-five zone all the time, sitting there around the lake. But when you come around that corner, that black and white car sticks out like a sore thumb when they come around the corner, and then people slow down. So it's one of those things with traffic enforcement. It's give and take, and it's really kind of like whack-a-mole is the best way I can describe traffic enforcement when it comes down to it. You know, there's discussions about speed bumps, things like that. But the radar signs, like I had suggested to Mr. Spiker, is that if you find a company and you purchase some, we'd be more than happy to maintain it, deploy it. Obviously, we can't run out, you can't call me and expect it to be out in an hour, but we'll put it on the list. We'll get it out there in the next couple of days type of thing. So obviously, it all depends on how busy we are when it comes down to our traffic guys. We have two deputies that are assigned strictly to traffic safety, excuse me, traffic safety with traffic enforcement in the county out of our agency, and they're the ones that deal with all of the traffic complaints, bus stop complaints, construction zone complaints, and things like that.
Question about the signs that I saw on the proposal. Do you recommend the one that has posted speed limit and then what your speed is, the two together?
So, and that's kind of the hard thing is, is like Door Road has no speed limit sign. So we know as police officers, it's fifty-five miles an hour. But at the same time, it goes back to the caveat is careful what you wish for. If you tell somebody that it's fifty-five, that's not doing fifty-five, they might speed up to fifty-five. But then if somebody's doing seventy, they may try to see how fast they can get the sign to go. Whatever you guys feel comfortable with, we'll make work. The other thing is, is just being able to post it. We generally use road commission signs to post it, so we usually post it underneath the speed limit sign anyways. We have some other ones that have, have the speed sign on it, but they're also, it's basically like a hole in a metal sign that you can put the thing behind and mount it on any pole. But we generally don't drop new poles. We just put it where we can find it so that it's giving an accurate reading to the person driving.
Are you aware, we had one of these speed signs on Crooked Lake Road for about a month.
Yes, that was Mr. Spiker that asked for that.
Did we get any data from that?
I apologize. When I pulled in today, I forgot to get the data to Mr. Spiker, and I will get that to him.
So if we wanted some of these, we could borrow one from you?
So Mr. Spiker asked. If you, if you ask, it just goes on the list. So I wanted, Mr. Spiker said that he had some issues with the construction with Grand River being closed and increased traffic. So I made it a point to get one down there for him with the deputies. But now we're just back into the rotation of bouncing it around to the different places. And it, it comes and goes. Winter time, we don't get a lot of requests for it because obviously it's snowy and icy, and it's gray, and people are depressed and don't drive as fast. But at the same time, summertime is the time that we always get it. We used to have the trailer, but that thing's been blown up by so many M-eighties over the course of my career that we don't use that trailer anymore. Golf clubs, baseball bats, yeah. So we got away from using the trailer, and we do the sign directly to it, so.
You kind of touched on like the can we borrow one thing?
Absolutely.
What's the ratio? You're like, there's a list. What's the average wait time for that list? You said it ebbs and flows, but like.
Usually the battery, we'll put it out for the battery to die, which is, it really depends on traffic. The battery could die in five days, or it could die in a week and a half. And then we'll take it down. We'll usually provide the person the data that called in the complaint to either disprove or prove it, and then we'll move it to the next spot. So it, it just rotates in like a weekly basis for the most part. It also obviously depends on our busyness. We have two guys, every time you read in the paper a fatal accident or the road being closed, those two guys are the ones that are responsible for handling those, so.
Still, like approximately, if you made a request, about how long might you expect to wait for a sign?
Well, I would say it would be out there within a month.
Okay.
So.
So how many does the county own right now?
So we have two digital display signs, and then we have a third sneaky one, which is just a box that mounts on a pole that nobody sees any numbers or anything, and they don't even know it's there. That gives us a more accurate reading because obviously you see a flash and sign at you. You slow down or you speed up type of thing. So we have one that is just for, strictly for data. I will caveat all of this. We, you can't, Michigan law does not allow you to write tickets off of these signs. So it's not like we can sit there hiding in a driveway and say, oh, you were doing twelve over and go after them. We have to actually obtain the speed reading because it's, they're calibrated radar devices, but Michigan law doesn't allow us to write tickets off of a device that's not able to be verified by our patrol car in the instant when it occurs.
So when I communicated with you back in July, I had questions when this was a discussion item. You said that you have received private donations for two more sites. Did you end up, did you end up buying two more, or?
So there was a gentleman that was adamant over in Brighton Township that lives in the school zone that wanted speed signs in the school zone.
And so that is a permanent location for that one?
So we still take them down and put them back up because of the inattentional blindness.
And then.
But they're dedicated for that spot?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
And if we do have something major happening, we contact him first to ask him, okay, if we can use it somewhere else for the time being. But he, I think he had purchased two of them, one for each side of the school zone.
Okay.
I put a couple of different options on. One is a slightly smaller sign, an eleven-inch. One is a thirteen-inch. Another difference to the thirteen-inch sign is it allows you a little more, it can put, please slow down, or there's a couple of messages you can put on. In your opinion, you know, do the messages, are they unneeded? Do they work?
Honest people are honest people is my thing. So anything to catch somebody's attention. I mean, if they flash, the, the one thing that we usually do at night because of vandalism and stuff, if we're in a subdivision, we usually turn the display off so that it doesn't pop up, so it doesn't draw attention to people. But for the most part, anyone that you decide on, it serves its purpose.
I'm guessing the one that was on Crooked Lake Road was just the basic.
Yes.
Because it only read the speed.
Yep.
And I believe it went, if you were going the speed limit, it was green, and then it switched to red. But there was no flashing, no nothing, no speed limit is.
Right.
And, I mean, seemed to work.
Right. Yeah, and that's the thing is, is that it just reminds people. And that's kind of why, back to the week long, we usually don't put it back up in the same spot. It's just, we've all, we're all there. And in life in general is, is that I know that there's a traffic light at Grand River and Door. I can't tell you if I stop at it or not just because my mind's somewhere else while I'm driving, but I know my body's stopping for it, so.
What about the camera issue?
The LPR cameras, so.
Do we want to move on to that? Does anybody have any further questions on the speed signs? Let's stick with the signs first, and then we'll.
Thank you, Lieutenant, for being here.
Yeah.
I guess a couple of questions that could morph into three questions.
Sure.
I'm looking at this from, is there any data that says that these signs are more or less effective at fatalities or car accidents?
So the car crashes, you're, there's lots, lots and lots of data. And my thing with statistics is, is statistics can be manipulated however they want to be manipulated. In regards to reducing traffic crashes, it really depends on where you deploy it. So if you're deploying it in a high-crash area with where you're determining those crashes are caused by speed, then yeah, it'll have that positive effect. But if you're getting rear-end crashes at stop signs, rear-end crashes at traffic lights, that's not a speed issue. So that's not, that sign's not serving the purpose of what it's for. So I will say, obviously, Genoa Township has a lot of roads and a lot of crashes. The crashes that we look at more are the ones that are happening with crossing the center line, speed-related, going off the road, crashing into a tree, rolling over. Those are the ones that aren't happening at intersections that can be attributed to speed. So that's why we generally don't put them, the speed signs, around intersections because it's the natural tendency to slow down and speed up. But I can probably find you data rather easily to prove that it does reduce it. And that's the thing is, is that I think you've all been here as well, you know, going up Latson Road north of Grand River and even south of, or north of Golf Club, Latson Road south of the railroad tracks. There's no speed limit sign, and if you're not from Livingston County, most people are doing forty-five because you go to southeast Michigan, almost every road's forty-five. It's not fifty-five. So then you get the backup of traffic, then you get people trying to overtake and things like that. But the road commission stance is they don't want to necessarily encourage the fifty-five, but they also don't want to buy fifteen thousand fifty-five mile an hour signs either because the law says if there's no speed limit sign, it is fifty-five miles an hour. So that's kind of where the road commission is on their project of why they don't put fifty-five signs out everywhere, so.
And forgive me, this is going to sound bad.
Okay.
I'm just going to prep it right now. So these, these devices have the ability to collect data, to transmit data for you to come and plug a computer and then download the data. I guess, you know, I'm asking myself, what could, what could we possibly be using that data for? And, you know, cynically, I said, that's your next speed trap. These guys are consistently doing twenty over. I'm going to set, like you said, I'm going to set a black and white there and start bringing the hammer down. That's one thing I could use it for. But then would you use it for, people are just doing fifty-five through here. I'm just going to change the speed limit to fifty-five because we just voted on something last meeting because we had a request from a resident here to say, listen, I think people are just going through here too quickly. Could you do a traffic study and maybe?
Default speed study?
Yes, could you please? So I'm just wondering what the data is used for that's collected.
So most of the time, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, is when people are complaining and complaining and complaining about speed. Number one, we'll have the conversation with them. We don't just, okay, yep, we'll, we'll put the speed sign out, hang up. So when they call and complain, we've had repeat callers on different locations, which is totally fine by us. We'll go up, put the sign up, and we'll give them the data. There is absolutely nothing besides a car count and an average speed that is recorded because alls it is in there is a radar that is shooting out a wavelength that returns back, and it says how fast this object's coming towards it, and that's it. The counts aren't statist, we've never sat there and counted to make sure that five hundred cars passed it and they counted five hundred. It's getting, it's getting a capture count. We've never verified it. In regards to the speed study, that's a whole big another animal. So the Michigan State Police are the only ones that can do a speed study. Your request has to go through the Livingston County Road Commission, who then contacts the Michigan State Police, who then puts you on a list to come out and do a speed study. That, I've heard, takes anywhere between six months and eight months sometimes, depending how many speed requests they have. But they have to come out and they have to measure the speed. It is written into the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code that local road commissions, local sheriff's offices, local police departments are not capable or allowed to do it. So we can give you a traffic count, and we could kind of maybe start that conversation for you. If you have someone that calls and wants a speed study done, we can give you data prior to. And you can say, we're not going to waste the road commission's time and the state police's time because this is what it is. We can also explain to them how it's set up because of probably going on six years, eight years ago, the motor vehicle code changed to where the speed limits, they got rid of the thirty mile an hour, forty mile an hour, fifty mile an hour, they got rid of all of the even numbers of speed limits because somebody in Lansing decided to do that, and I don't totally know why because it threw a lot of our speed limits in jeopardy. There are a couple of speed limits that got removed. I don't think there was any in Genoa Township. But Kahokta Township lost a couple twenty-five zones because they just didn't have enough intersecting driveways to keep the speed limit low enough. And then that puts residents into a tailspin as well for the simple fact that I used to live on this twenty-five. I used to live on this 25 mile an hour road and now it's 55, or now it's 45. So, I can't, we can't use the data other than to give it to the township. It can give you a traffic count. I don't know how much, I'm assuming you guys play an integral role into choices with the road commission on road maintenance and things like that. You could definitely see where your cars are traveling more and what roads they're traveling on more because it'll just do that traffic count. And that's kind of the luxury of having the speed sign where you can turn the display off. You can just set it up and then just get a traffic count and not actually, not actually display the speed, but you can figure out what people are actually doing speed wise prior to without displaying it, trying to get them to slow down and things like that and putting them on notice that it's out there. You can just gather the data just for your own education and for planning purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, so if, on that point, if a resident says, people are speeding here all the time and you have all that conversation, you decide to deploy one of the signs out there and it goes away and then you provide them with the traffic count and the average speed, what does that do for them or what does that end up, what happens to that now? I mean, here's what it is.
So, probably one of the biggest complaints that we get is semi trucks, especially D-19. They're flying, they're flying. We go out there, they're all at 53, 54 miles an hour in the 55 zone. They just are bigger, they look faster, and they sound faster. So, most of the time, and that's kind of the thing that not necessarily myself, but all of our entire agency, we're willing to have the conversation with people. We'll provide them with the data and we'll sit down with them and explain to them, hey, this is what we found out, out on your road. So, don't expect us sitting out in your driveway running radar on people and things like that. And then, back to your question about targeting for speed traps, we police 13 townships and 600 square miles. We have two traffic deputies that are explicitly towards traffic enforcement. All of our other deputies either carry a, the burden of responding to 911 calls as well as traffic enforcement. That's not who we are and that's not how we operate as an agency. And the sheriff won't stand for us to target either people that don't live in our county or people that live in our county. You know, and I guess I'll dispel the rumor since I have the stage today. No matter how many traffic tickets we write, we get $5. That's it, from a sheriff's department. So, the whole, you know, keyboard warrior thing where people say that we're out, end of the month, generating revenue and stuff like that, for us, we write under state law. That's not a thing. That's just, it's just not a thing. Most of the traffic ticket goes to the court system, goes to education. Motor carrier tickets go to the library fund, things like that. So, we really don't, we can't even keep the lights on. If, with all the tickets that we write in a year, we can't even keep the lights on at the sheriff's office, let alone fund positions with it.
So, there is no quota?
They actually outlawed quotas back in the, probably five to 10 years ago that there is no quota. And I can sit here and tell you with 100% certainty that we have no quota in anything that we do when it comes to traffic enforcement. So, when it comes down to giving somebody a break on the side of the road or giving them a ticket, we, as an agency, value the education more than we do the enforcement part of it. If somebody needs a ticket, they get a ticket. But at the same time, if you have a 16-year-old, I've stood on the side of the road with a 16-year-old with, you know, snot running out of their nose, calling mom and dad, telling them they got pulled over for speeding more than, you know, because I know that's going to do a lot more damage than what a ticket is for mom and dad's insurance that they have to pay anyways. So, we definitely, as an agency, focus more on education than we do enforcement when it comes to traffic.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
Yes, so I'm hearing what you're saying and you're still, like, I'm listening to, 29,000 for these is a lot of money, especially since there's.
The speed signs are 2,900 for the smaller one and I believe 3,400 for the larger one, so.
That's you. I'm talking about the overall package that is requested in the board packet.
Okay, well, that's a, we're kind of tackling them one item at a time. He hasn't gotten into the LPR cameras, which he will.
Okay, go ahead then, sorry.
Any other questions on the radar stuff?
So, just so everybody knows, the reason I put that on there is many, many, many people think there is a lot of speeding going on. I don't necessarily agree with that, but that can prove or disprove that. I had proposed potentially splitting one large sign, one small sign, keeping the cost down. And that small sign could potentially be dedicated to or more often put in subdivisions. We get a lot of subdivision complaints and I think it's people just don't realize how fast they're going within those subdivisions. Those are the areas where we really need people to not speed.
Correct.
That's where our kids are, pets, you name it. So, that is why this is on here. We feel it's a value that we can provide to, you know, our stakeholders, the Genoa Township residents, but we can go either way on that. And the radar signs were really something we brought up. And Lieutenant Sell just offered the service of moving them around and whatnot. I don't think he cares if you get one or not. So, now on the next subject, he's a little, that's a little more in his wheelhouse, so we'll let him speak on that.
All right, so, LPR cameras. We have 17 of them in Livingston County already. The historical behind it is in 2019 and 2020, Michigan State Police through the Burn Jag Grant had a technology grant that we wrote for cameras for and obtained. Since 2020, the technology grant has yet to come back. We've used these cameras for criminal activity throughout the county. The one thing, one caveat I'll tell you is, is I, in an open forum, don't want to discuss where they are. There are some in Genoa Township, there's some throughout the county. So, in 20, last year, Heartland Township approached me and they had purchased some of their own cameras. And then, Osceola Township has purchased some cameras as well. There's also two other jurisdictions in Livingston County that have purchased cameras. In the big picture, over 130 municipalities in Michigan have cameras and they're deployed, creating a very large network of cameras. The reason behind the cameras, a couple of things. So, number one is, is that they snap a photograph of a license plate. The Michigan Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court have declared license plates as plain view, so there's no expectation of privacy. It does not run the person, it does not tell us who it is, it does not tell us anything. It just simply snaps a photograph. Though, that photograph, the license plate, the letters and numbers are checked against a known list, which is maintained by the Michigan State Police, known as Automated License Plate Reading List. That list, to be able to be on that list, your vehicle has to be wanted for a crime or your vehicle has to be wanted for you being a missing person, a wanted person, or the vehicle being taken without permission and not being driven by the person that it was.
So, that list updates, adds and deletes license plates constantly?
Yes, and it's uploaded four times a day by the Michigan State Police and it's maintained by the Michigan State Police through Lean, which is the law enforcement information network, which obviously, as a law enforcement agency, we input a missing person in and we know what car they're in. Then, that will trigger these license plates to be able to find people. So, part of the reason in 2020, or 2019 and 2020, why we started to invest in this technology is that in my 21 years at the sheriff's office, people that travel long, very, very long distances, and I'm talking states away to break the law, in Genoa Township, in Howell Township, has increased exponentially. So, we're dealing with, and if you've seen any of the Channel 7, Sheriff Mike Bouchard over in Oakland County does a great job of putting the stuff out about the Romanian gangs that have traveled throughout the United States, breaking into houses, things like that. We're not, and Genoa Township is not immune to that. We have dealt with these gangs and things like that. You having an easy on, easy off, commercial district makes it very difficult. That's why we invested some of our technology in Genoa Township to begin with, was in the commercial area. And we only put it on high-traveled roadways with, you know, basically to try to create a bubble. So, if we have a serious crime, we just don't have the people. And the big picture, back to even when I started as a police officer in 2005, have to be in the right place at the right time. And 98% of the time, we're never in the right place at the right time. So, this just gives us the ability to review things back. So, the sad part about it is that places, businesses don't invest a lot into their security. We're dealing with very grainy video cameras and things of that nature. And then, we're getting a side view of a car pulling through a parking lot that just did an armed robbery, that just did something either violent or property crime wise. And alls we have is a car to go on. And now, it seems like everybody either drives a white car or a gray car and there's a million cars that look like that. So, that's kind of the thing that, that we're proposing is, is we're going with a private partnership and looking towards the townships to do some investing for us as well. We did have two sites that were privately funded by companies that wanted these cameras because we had solved crimes with these cameras and they knew we had and they wanted cameras out in front of their place on the public roadway. So, they had purchased those cameras as well. So, really, in the big picture, it, the last two armed robberies that we had at the Clyde Road Mobile and at the 7-Eleven, we solved them because of these cameras. We have no, there's nothing else that we solve these with than being able to identify a vehicle and point us in the right direction to talk to somebody. So, this year alone, we have 41 million scans. We thought that this was, hey, we're going to find the needle in the haystack. We just have a really gigantic haystack. Unless we're looking for something or someone, we don't go into that computer system. The data, the amount of data is overwhelming when it comes down to it on how many vehicles are captured. And it goes back to our policies and procedures as well. This software is CGIS compliant, we have to have a reason to log in, we have to have a reason to run a license plate. And everything's recorded now on a backend audit that we monitor. So, if we have one guy that's constantly logging in and not having a legitimate reason to run the same license plate over, we get a flag and we say, hey, why are you running this license plate? So, there are safeguards in place. And I obviously trust every one of my deputies that works at the sheriff's office with my life. We put them through vigorous screening, vigorous training, that they're in compliance with it. We don't, you know, knock on wood, we don't have any bad apples in our place like you see in other places. We take our time with our hiring and we take our time with our training to make sure that we have people that are ethical and moral and use the equipment and technology that we provide properly. So, in regards to the cameras themselves, I know that they are expensive and that's the problem that we're running into now, is where do we go next? Where can we put them to help us? And that's why we have reached out to the township. When I was speaking with Osceola and Heartland about theirs, I said, you know, next obvious question is, is does Genoa Township want to do it? And that's why I'm here today, is to answer any of your questions on it.
One thing I clarified, there is a manufacturer of these cameras that sells some of the data to some insurance companies and that concerned me much. And I talked to Lieutenant Sell, that is not the company that we use and we would not permit that to happen.
Correct.
So, that was, that was very comforting. There have also been some feel-good stories that weren't criminal related that were able to be helped with these cameras as well in terms of retrieving somebody that maybe shouldn't have been behind the wheel due to an age concern or some sort of limitation.
We have found people from Florida off of our cameras because they went to the store in Florida and ended up up here, so.
The amber alerts.
Yep.
Silver, they're called silver alerts.
Yep.
Silver alerts too?
Yeah.
Well, I know a lot of people, when they hear cameras, they think you're invading my privacy. I appreciate the explanation, you explained it well. I do feel in Genoa Township, because of our I-96 on-off exits, our commercial corridor, it's very important to have these in Genoa. I mean, this has got to be a key point for you to pull some good data, so.
Correct.
Now, I'm guessing also this data is kept, right? So that later, if you have a missing person, you can search everything that's been uploaded for months?
So, what ours is set at is, our current data is set at two years.
Okay.
And then, it expunges itself after two years. The furthest we've gone back is eight months, which I can tell you was a stolen vehicle from the Champion right here at Lake Shemung. And that person using LPR cameras was actually arrested in the midst of stealing a vehicle in Pennsylvania. And that was the same person and he was originally from Ohio. But he had come all the way up here to steal a car from Champion and this is just what he does, is he steals cars and then sells them.
And you feel the request for five of these cameras is sufficient at this time?
So, whatever the township feels comfortable with. When I was putting everything together, Mr. Spiker asked me what our wish list was. And I said, if, in a perfect world, this would close the bubble to where the commercial district would be fully covered. To where, if you left the commercial district after breaking the law, then we could, there was a high likelihood that we would, I'd be able to identify the vehicle that did it. So, one camera does one lane. It requires a comms box with a cell phone SIM card and a $300 a year data licensing fee. We absorb, we provide the SIM card, we absorb the $300 a year fee along with all of our other cameras. And then, the only thing we ask you for is the upfront purchase. They have two different programs. You can either purchase a camera outright, where it's your camera and then, or they do a lease program, which is $2,500 a year. They provide the SIM card and then that's a five-year contract. And then, once the five-year contract is up, you can be done with it and not do it again. Every township or jurisdiction has just outright purchased it and we've provided the SIM card and then we've provided the yearly data fee, licensing fee after that as well. It's just that initial purchase for us that is difficult for us to hit when we're trying to do everything else. I was speaking with a couple of board members beforehand is that I've become the technology nerd for some odd reason, but everything we do is technology now. Our tasers are technology, where you upload, put the battery in and it uploads all the data and does firmware updates. We're providing, you know, basically mobile offices to all of our deputies. It's just one of those things where we're good right now, but we, we could definitely be better with, when it comes to the cameras and things like that because at the same time, the hard part is recruitment right now. The law enforcement is a career position that is not looked at as a, as a career anymore. So, when I tested in 2005 for four positions at the sheriff's office, there was 200 applicants. And now, we have interviews next week for six people for five positions. And it's just, it is what it is. It's just not something that the general public looks to do anymore.
So, this is a force multiplier?
Hundred percent.
You don't have to provide health benefits for, don't have to buy a car?
Correct. And at the same time, it allows us to be in more places when we can't be physically, so.
Exactly.
Yep.
And I was vague on the presentation for very much reason. As I said, the lieutenant said, hey, in a perfect world, our dream would be five. You can choose to buy one, you can choose to buy, you know, you can choose whatever level of spending you're comfortable. You can say, we don't need these.
If you have $100,000, I can find spots.
On the speed cameras, the deal is you have to buy two to get the cheaper price, which is about a $700 discount. So, those, unfortunately, you would have to do two. I was able to talk the manufacturer into allowing us to do one small one and one big one if we decided to go that way. The larger sign is solar powered, the smaller sign is strictly battery. So, that enables you for a little longer coverage on that large sign, so. One thing I forgot to explain, but it's not an all or nothing on the LPR cameras by any stretch. Whatever the board is comfortable with.
If we choose to move forward on this, I would absolutely recommend the one-time purchase, not the lease.
Right.
So, you said that currently, Genoa Township has a couple, that's correct?
Yes.
And you were able to already catch somebody with the one, with one of the ones that we have, correct?
Since 2019, Genoa Township has had them and we've used them hundreds of times.
And how many, do you, do you have a rough idea of how many criminals you have caught with them?
I don't always necessarily see it all the way through. We used to keep a list because it was a federal grant of how many times we were using them for submitting in, submitting for the grant requirements. But we have them, obviously, in your main. um, for submitting in, submitting for the grant requirements. Um, but we have them obviously in your main commercial district. Um, so we use it quite frequently. So, and, and that just, it gives us a jumping off point. Because that's the thing in the big picture, which is obviously the requirement to get an arrest warrant and things like that. Just because your car's there doesn't mean that you're the one driving it. So, it's kind of like facial recognition, which is a hot button thing that we don't use, is that just because it says it's you, we still have to do the police work part of it. Where we have to go, um, and that's kind of the thing too is like, most people, obviously, I, I heard the one residence, um, concerned about a police state and monitoring stuff like that. This isn't for our residents. We, Genoa Township, Hartland Township, all of the townships with easy on and easy off access. We are, it goes back to my initial statement of twenty-one years. There's people driving from Kentucky to steal from the outlet mall. There's people driving from Ohio to steal from Walmart. There's people driving from Ohio to Champion to steal there. And then, you know, if we want to get into the property crime part of it too, um, the, uh, your business owner at ServPro, we worked with him quite extensively. His vans park outside. He lost catalytic converters multiple times there. Um, and it's just one of those things that we can't be in the right place at the right time, all the time. You know, and we play a lot of catch-up when it comes down to policing in Livingston County for the simple fact that we're trying to police thirteen townships twenty-four seven and we just, it's hard to provide bodies to every township all the time. Um, so we obviously have our contracted areas where they have dedicated patrols. But we try to focus on the hotspots. We have a data analyst that's telling us, hey, this is what's happening and where it's happening. And we try to focus our resources more now using technology than it is just a bunch of cops out driving in circles looking for people to pull over and write speeding tickets to or whatever. You know, if we're getting break-ins, we're focusing on that area. If we're getting cars broken into, we focus on that area. We try to do different things to, to use data more so now than we ever did. When I first started, it was just drive around and see if you can find the bad guy. And that's not, that's not police work anymore.
Camera captures the car. It's one that you're looking for. You know that it was on Grand Riverhead West, but then it's out of that range. Where else is it being picked up to be able to follow that trail?
So, that's the thing, that's the thing with the hundred and thirty communities jurisdictions in Michigan is that we'll use a camera to identify a car. We don't ever use a camera to track a car. Um, we use it to identify the car and then we'll go to the house and we'll talk to the person and say, hey, do you know who your car, who had your car? Or, hey, were you in Howell here? And then when they say, no, I wasn't, and we show them a picture and they say, oh, yeah, I was, sorry, um, type of thing. So, we, this isn't one of those things. So, the Livingston County cameras are real-time to the Livingston County Sheriff's Office. So, those will tell us when there's a stolen car, a missing person, um, anything that's entered on that list. But that doesn't give us access to Detroit Police Department stuff in, in real time. That's later on in our detective bureau. That's later on using the actual software part of it. We only get real-time Livingston County camera stuff. So, we don't care what's happening anywhere else because obviously we don't, it doesn't affect that. We also don't put the cameras that close together to be able to track. We just put them in high, high travel areas that people that aren't from Livingston County are gonna use to, um, to leave, to come in and to leave Livingston County when, because criminals don't come around here and hang out and go to Applebee's and then, you know, go shop at Myers and then go break the law at Walmart. They drive here, they commit their crime and then they leave. Residents here are using dirt roads and using Euler Road and all the other different dirt roads. So, that's not where we put cameras. So, we're not tracking people in regards to that. We're putting them on high ingress and egress roadways that people that aren't familiar with Livingston County, when you type in GPS, I need to go break the law at Walmart. It'll take you the most direct route, which is the most highly traveled route. It's not gonna take you down, you know, Crooked Lake Road to Latson Road up that way. It's gonna take you I ninety-six to Latson Road to Walmart to get you there faster and, and that's it.
So, the request for five cameras, is that coming from, from the supervisor or is that your request to us?
What I threw on the list for him was, um, what would close that, which would create a bubble around your commercial district.
Got it. Okay.
So.
I understand.
So, you said earlier though, that the, um, when you were talking about the most effective thing was having a car present. And I do have to agree with that versus like a camera. Because when people see a police officer, they slow down, they abide by the law a whole lot better. And I look, I've checked with other townships and, um, because I contacted the clerks. And Iosco Township and Putnam Township have dedicated police officers that they pay for, um, in those areas. And I personally think that that would be, we, we've already, we know that the two cameras that we have have been effective. Why spend twenty-nine thousand dollars more on more cameras that are already working when we could have money towards a, a real-life police officer dedicated to this area? And I feel that that would be a little bit more effective from, from my point of view than just cameras out there. That you say, does it, don't monitor speeds and don't monitor, um, citizen stuff unless it's a, 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 actual real crime, like a break-in or a robbery or something like that. And if you look at our statistics and our nine-one-one calls, we really don't have that many of them. It's really, it's more speeding and accidents, traffic accidents and, um, disputes, I guess, with your spouse or I, I don't know what they call that when, um.
Organized retail fraud, that's a thing. Um, the five cameras would pretty much act as five sentries. Constant watching over those five spots.
Correct.
Where a dedicated officer would, on a lucky moment, be at one of those five spots. Maybe one time out of god knows how many times when they gotta be.
Well, and that's the hard part too is, is someone having a valid description of a vehicle as well to give us. So, that's kind of, here's the hard part when it comes down to like police work. I'll give you a, a quick glimpse under the hood and whatever you want me to, whenever you want to tell me to stop, I'll stop. So, Livingston County doesn't have foot traffic. We don't have an urban area where there's people traveling on bicycle, people walking and doing those things. Everybody here, and we tell all of our new deputies when they start, is everybody here uses a car to commit a crime. So, they're traveling to and from places using a car, whether it's their car, whether they have a license or not, whether they have insurance or not, that's it. Um, statistically speaking, Genoa Township is our busiest township. We provide more police services, um, in Genoa Township percentage-wise, call volume-wise than any other of the twelve townships that we provide police services to.
Your number one call then?
So, here's the caveat of our number one calls is, and I can kind of put it all in, in three main, three main categories. Mental health, domestic assault, domestic violence. So, those two kind of just go try to fight each other for the top and then traffic-related matters.
Right. And that's exactly getting to my point is having, because the response times are pretty slow. Having a dedicated officer here in the county that can respond to that stuff quicker and a better police presence would make more sense to me than just a camera.
So, this is totally separate.
I kind of feel like these are totally different topics.
Yeah, this is totally separate from a, a dedicated officer. This will get you a dedicated officer for a week.
This is my point of trying to tell you, explain to you about the twenty-nine thousand dollars and why I, I'm not in support of it. And I'm asking him questions because I have to find out about some, about what my point of view is.
So.
So, the, but Walmart has cameras, right? And all these other retail places have cameras on the outside. And if you're not catching these criminals from the, the, the video surveillance that they provide, I'm just not a hundred percent sure at how much more accurate. I get it. You're gonna get license plates and you'll see where they're headed, which way they're heading. Do they head east or west? But I think that for our township, I think that having a dedicated police officer is gonna be the most effective.
So, in regards to the dedicated, so, a couple of things is that in Walmart and I, and really, um, to preface it, I, whether you purchased the cameras or whatever, I'm just more speaking just for education purposes, um, is that, so, most of the time, if somebody calls us, they don't necessarily have a vehicle description to start with. So, that deputy right there, being right there or sitting right there, isn't necessarily gonna be able to stop the car when it leaves because they don't necessarily have a description because they're watching the crime happen. They're calling nine-one-one saying this is happening. And then they don't give us a vehicle description until they have time to go back and review their cameras. Um, in regards to, as of right now, Putnam Township has a, um, contract with us for forty hours a week. Um, the Tyrone Township has a contract with us for fifty-six hours a week. Oceola has a contract with us, I believe for sixteen hours a week. Kahakta has a township, contract for, I believe, eight hours a week and I, or, and Iosco has eight hours a week. The unfortunate thing is, Genoa Township is extremely, and Hartland Township has a, um, eighty-four hour a week contract with us. Um, is that Genoa Township is so busy that I don't know if one deputy in this township at a time could do all the things that you want them to do because it's so busy. Um, is that like right now, in Hartland Township, when they're dispatched to a medical call and another call comes in, in Hartland Township, that's not a life and death priority, that call waits for that deputy over in Hartland Township. There's times when, um, I've never left Genoa Township in a shift because it's just been that busy on a twelve-hour shift. But at the same time, there's times when we're in Kahakta Township for eight hours and there isn't a call for service. And it's mostly checking parks and watching bus stops and sitting on stop signs and waiting for, there's several, um, communities in Genoa Township that contract with us just to be in their subdivision. Um, there's a couple in Oceola Township that contract with us as well, just to be in their to, just to be in their subdivision for speeding enforcement and that, um, type of thing. So, I don't want you to have an inflated thought of one body is gonna solve it all, um, type of thing.
It's not, but you're not guaranteed to be in Genoa every day. And what I'm saying is that this way, it would provide at least a daily to maybe cut back on some of this stuff. That, that was just my point on that.
But in the big, in the bigger picture is, is that with the cameras up, we have the data. We can go talk to that person and even if it's a week later, they're like, oh, I was in Genoa Township and they caught me. So, the fact of not having the cameras, um, the cameras are just always on. They're always on and they're always looking. Um, and they're, they're helpful. It's just, it's one of those things because you are at a crossroads as a township. You're, you're in a difficult position. Do you provide police services with the black and white driving around that's shaking hands, um, and talking to people and dealing with the township issues that township wants that police officer to deal with? Or are you dealing with technology? And it, it's not an easy answer. And I, I, obviously, I'm not gonna sit here and give you an answer either. Um, I'm just giving you the data on both sides of it.
No, appreciate your help.
Yep.
If we hired an officer though, wouldn't your, wouldn't the sheriff department still assist?
In regards to?
Like if we had problems and he was doing one thing, wouldn't someone else from the sheriff department be able to assist in another thing?
Hundred percent. Life and death emergencies, you get all of us.
Wouldn't that be helpful if we had someone here besides you?
Hundred percent, hundred percent. It, if you have dedicated patrols, there's, obviously, that's way better than the fact that you could call nine-one-one at any point in time and we could not be in the township. And we could not, we could, it could take us longer to get here because we're not in the township. But if you have dedicated patrols that are here, um, then when they call nine-one-one, they're here. Hundred percent. They may be on a call and they may have to fight traffic to get there, but they will get there faster than the time when the deputies aren't in this township.
I know. Because I talked to Mike Murphy this morning about this and he said that Hartland has two people, twelve hours a day, seven days a week for that.
Yes.
And we have more, like I, I printed some documents that he sent me. We actually have more crime here than they do. And we don't have anybody.
Correct.
So, I thi, I really think it's a priority. We get at least one. We need to do that. Cameras, whatever, but we need to have somebody here.
And, and that's the conversation for you to have as a board. Um, Hartland Township went to six AM to six PM. Tyrone Township does eight hours, seven days a week. Putnam does eight hours, um, five days a week. So, it, it's, it's whatever you guys want. But I will tell you that it may be a little bit, there might need to be more investment because if I put one deputy in Genoa Township from ten AM to five PM, they'll probably quit.
Why?
Because it's so busy.
Too much.
It is so busy.
You're saying that you recommend two at least?
I, I would, I would recommend two. I mean, we could, we could really sit down statistically and hash out and give you suggestions. This obviously is a very high-level conversation, um, about it. But my twenty-one years here, I, I would suggest two to start. Because at the same time, they piggyback off of each other and they, that's their backup right there. Because obviously, there's some situations where if we're, they're busy in Genoa Township, they may have to wait for a backup car to come from Deerfield or something like that to handle a higher priority thing. Um, you know, the one thing that is always a difficult, it's a difficult statement to make. Um, but with more people comes more traffic, comes more traffic crashes, comes more complaints to the township, more people taking advantage of other people, things like that. So, it, it's really a kind of a whole gamut. It's not, you don't want to provide police to stop criminals. You actually want to provide police to assist with traffic crashes, traffic education, back to the traffic stops where we educate people. You know, when the Genoa Township cars aren't busy, they can be out in the school zone, stopping at the schools or stopping people in school zones and warning them, hey, this is not, you know, you're going way too fast out here and stuff like that. And obviously, then I would probably give those deputies the keys to the speed signs to move around. And that's the thing too is like, and it's really hard to sell from a sheriff's office perspective, um, is that you get us. You get our detective bureau, you get our traffic safety, you get a hotline to the sheriff when you call, because he, he answers now. Great sheriff, great boss to work for. But we also bend over backwards for you when you're contracted with us to make sure that you know that you're getting what you're, what you're putting in. And, you know, I, I'll always equate it, I was in our traffic safety unit for a long time and this was years ago, fifteen years ago. I was in our traffic unit. The sheriff called me when they were redoing Hartland Road and said, hey, Hartland wants to know what the speed limit's gonna be there. I'm like, hey, I'm over here right now. I'll pull into the township. And I walked in the township manager and I said, hey, you had a question about the speed limit on Hartland Road? And he's like, I just hung up with the sheriff. And I'm like, we're your police department. Like, we still go above and beyond for you. Don't get me wrong. I think that everybody's probably called the sheriff and asked for a favor here or there for a deputy to be here at this time and to target certain elements of speed or whatever. And we, we get to it eventually. But we also bend over backwards for you on a contracted basis as well and provide you with, with that police department because we want to be your police department. We don't want you to contract with us and then, you know, roll your eyes and be, you know, questioning the service that we're providing. So, we're, we're an open door when it comes to that stuff.
So, for me, this is a much broader conversation.
Huge broad conversation.
A lot of investigation and a lot of things to figure out moving forward. I guess the question for you is, whether we contract out and get one sheriff, two sheriffs, these five cameras you feel are still necessary, correct?
It would be, it would not only benefit Genoa Township, it would benefit the entire Livingston County. Yeah. So. And, you know, the Oceola cameras assisted us with the armed robbery in Howell Township. They assisted us with a significant retail crime ring out of the outlet mall. And, and I let them know. And that was within the first week of them having their cameras. Um, and that's, you know, big picture, global picture. It would be huge, especially being in the middle of the county.
So, we're kind of like the holes in the bubble.
Correct.
And if these get bought, then there won't be holes in the bubble.
Correct.
What I would say is, um, these are for, more for crime solving than crime preventing. And if we solve a lot of crimes, the word will get out that if you steal stuff in Livingston County, there's a great chance you are going to get caught. That is an excellent preventative.
Well, and, and that by no means do I enjoy it or, or do we pat ourselves on the back for it. Um, we're one of the few agencies left in the state of Michigan that will pursue a vehicle. Um, and it, and it's known. It is known that we will chase. Um, and it, and it's known, it is known that we will chase people. And, and, and everybody else east of us, everybody west of us, everybody south of us, everybody north of us does not chase vehicles. So that, that rumor is out there and it's not something that I take pride in, but at the same time, I'm proud of it. The fact that they know that um, we will chase them. And that's whether they are from this county or if they're not from this county, is that there, there is a, an element of police work that still needs to be done. And these cameras allow us to, to help us continue to do that police work. And with that technology, we can go and knock on people's doors now and say, hey, your car was here, where were you? And start that conversation when before we were just looking for a gray hatchback and hopefully that gray hatchback didn't come back. And that's the thing too is that we're finding too on these um, career criminals is that they're doing it at multiple stores. And we're finding, you know, when we get one license plate, if we get the license plate, we could crack five or six. The, the armed robbery at seven eleven, they were from South Lansing. There was seven armed robberies where they pistol whipped somebody and we were the only ones that came up with the license plate to start it and now they're in jail. But once we got the license plate, we gave it to other agencies, they started looking at their cameras, finding out that that car was there in that area at that time of that armed robbery and we put two and two together. So that's, that's big picture, big global picture of not only does it help all of Livingston County and Genoa Township, but statewide. I mean, it, it, I never thought that the day would come when we would have this. Uh, it was always just a pipe dream until that grant came in twenty twenty. But now the grants are now focused on other things and they haven't come back to technology. I'm hopeful that they do. But at the same time, I don't see us being able to focus on areas without the partnership of the jurisdictions within Livingston County.
So when they catch these guys, are they always getting prosecuted? Like, are they in trouble?
Yes, they're, they're not getting out, those guys are not getting out anytime soon. And, and it really, it depends on, on who gets more. And it, it's, it's actually turned into a race of who can put together a better case faster now um, between the different detective bureaus. But it's also, you know, it's fantastic. We have large database, or not databases, but large communication servers where detectives are sharing more information now than they ever have before. Because there's so many videos from commercial businesses, there's license plate cameras out there. There's everything out there to be able to talk about because that's the thing is, is that most people always wear the same shoes or they always wear the same clothes or they always drive the same car when they go to break the law. So now as a, as a whole, law enforcement is realizing that they can't do it by themselves. That we have to involve other agencies and criminals don't know jurisdictional lines. They, they really don't and they never will. They don't care where that Walmart's in Genoa Township. They care that it's Walmart and they're going to come break the law at Walmart. And they've figured out a way to break the law at Walmart, will come to find out they've broken the law at Walmart in eighty different Walmarts in five different states and it's all the same. My last claim to fame, um, before I became a desk jockey was a, a group of guys that I stopped on M fifty-nine that had ten thousand dollars worth of Apple products in their trunk. And they had the receipts for all of them, but every one of the things were bought by, with a gift card or cash. We tracked them all the way the day before to an Illinois Target where they were doing, using stolen credit cards and they were all wearing the same clothes. And you really can't defeat that purpose. But that was a lucky traffic stop that I made. Um, and then just found these Apple products that they didn't want to let go and they, they were adamant that they were going to get away with it. And um, we ended up tracking them to Illinois. So they, criminals just don't know jurisdictional lines. And they, they never will and now they're willing to travel long distances. I mean, these people were um, from Livingston County and they drove all the way to Illinois to use stolen credit cards. So what's to stop them from, you know, everything else? So i- it's really, when it comes down to the cameras, it's, it's a global picture of technology now.
And keep in mind, we conflated things a little bit. A, i- if you were to do the all-five camera purchase for a one-time twenty-nine thousand dollars, that is kind of a totally different argument than a half million dollar a year commitment to a dedicated deputy. I think those are two completely separate items. Um, the speed signs are on top of the, the twenty-nine thousand if you want to do all five. Um, and there's several different levels of, whether you want to get one small one, one big one, two small ones, two big ones. Um, those are all things you'll have to spell out and make, uh, make a decision.
They did give me um, a, another quote for two cameras, which would be one site is ten thousand six hundred. So that, and I can leave that with you just for your paperwork so that you can look at what the numbers are. Um, but at the same time, uh, we would love to sit down as well for, to have a negotiation, not negotiation, but just basically a setup of what it would look like to, to be your police agency. We have no problem sitting down and going through it and we can go through numbers, obviously super high level discussion tonight um, about it. But we're always interested. We're always interested in providing a better service to our community and to the jurisdictions inside of it, so.
Yeah, when I talked to him earlier, he said he'd be glad to come. I just have to get him on the agenda and see what the consensus was here, if there was any interest in that.
Yeah, and, and, and there's, you know, it's whatever the township would want. You know, I, I would suggest two and I would, you know, I, I would suggest two and I would suggest starting during the day. Morning commute traffic, evening commute traffic, our deputies work twelve hour shifts, kind of works out perfect that way. Six AM to six PM to have dedicated coverage type of thing. Um, but at the same time, it's whatever the township wants, whatever the township thinks that they need, we can make work with you.
Okay.
So.
We have a question on our upcoming master plan survey that will determine if the residents are in favor of um, increased policing at a cost. So I, I think that decision is for, what's up?
You want to leave it to the public? What about the board? Is the board interested in that? In speaking with him?
I'd be interested in hearing.
Oh, our board? Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But if you're going to commit, uh, if you're going to commit those kind of funds, you, you probably better make sure that the residents have the stomach for, for what, what that costs.
Absolutely.
So.
All right, so in front of us tonight though, we've got the twenty-nine thousand for the cameras, that's five of them.
Yep.
Uh, it looks like for the larger solar speeding sign is four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven and that was with
a little bit of a discount on the match.
An extra battery pack. Oh, is there?
Yeah, so they're, they're running a special. And let me find my paperwork. I had it with me. So uh, thirty-four fifty-five for the larger sign.
Okay.
Out the door.
Okay.
Uh, and two thousand nine hundred for the smaller sign out the door. You have to buy two to get that pricing.
Right.
Um, they will allow us to mix and match or if you want two smaller ones, two larger ones, or if you want nothing.
Your recommendation is one of each?
I like the idea of the smaller one in the subdivision.
Yeah, I, I kind of, I kind of thought that could give us a, a, a nice thing to give to our subdivision residents.
And the two of those together would be how much?
That would be, so if you did one small and one large, you would be at
six thousand?
Six thousand four hundred, but I think it's sixty-three ninety-five. My calculator's a little slow.
So what was the twenty-nine thousand?
That's the cameras.
Those are the cameras that the Sheriff's Department has said would be their ultimate wish list. Um, they are approximately fifty-eight hundred a camera. So if you decided you only had the stomach for two, or if you want to do two this year, two next year, three, two, four, one, you know.
So you want ca, two camera, or five cameras and two signs?
Yeah. Uh, just, uh, the two speed signs are, are up for debate and then you have up to five of the LPR cameras. And they're a totally separate um, item. They, they, they accomplish two completely different tasks.
Again, what was that number on the signs?
Three thousand four fifty-five.
And twenty-nine hundred.
And two thousand nine hundred.
Were you?
Yeah.
I didn't hear the signs again.
Three thousand.
Three thousand four hundred.
Four fifty-five.
Four fifty-five.
And two thousand.
Sixty-three ninety-five should be the total for the two signs if you do the mixed sizes.
Well, why don't we um, break them down into votes?
Why don't we get his opinion? Should we get the signs or the, or the cameras?
I think it's two different topics.
We're requesting both, or we're looking at.
I don't like that Genoa Township is the holes in the bubble. Don't pull, don't pull me into this debate.
No, no.
Um, so. I was here for data.
So let's, I would propose that we break it into two motions. Uh, the first one, I will propose that we purchase the two um, signs for a total of thirty-four fifty-five. One large, one small, as recommended by the supervisor.
Well, it's, it's thirty, thirty-four um, fifty-five for the large one, twenty-nine hundred for the small one.
Sixty-three hundred.
Okay, sixty-three hundred.
Sixty-three ninety-five.
Sixty-four hundred.
There we go.
To exceed sixty-four hundred.
There you go.
That's my, that's my motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Just one last clarification. This is a dumb box that just records trips and speed. Doesn't take any pictures, doesn't identify any individuals. It's just five hundred cars went by and here's the speed every single car went. It may not even record a car. It may be, if you're going fast enough on a bike, it'll record the bike too, but it doesn't know. And you did say that data correlates to fewer wrecks, if the wreck was caused by blind spots, right? If it's, it, we put them in areas where it is speed related.
Okay.
Um, and it may be a twenty-five zone where we don't have speed related crashes and we're just trying to bring it down. Or it may be on Crooked Lake Road where the fifty-five zone and, you know, that beautiful, nice, smooth asphalt that just makes people's foot on the right go down faster.
And this is also an item that could be, we could borrow?
Correct.
We could get in the rotation to borrow it?
You, you, at any point in time, you are all welcome to email us and say, hey, we, we're getting complaints about speed here and we'll get it to you sometime within a month.
Okay.
Um, and we'll get that put out there for you. This is just you owning signs and us coming and grabbing them and putting them up for you.
And not having to wait sometime in a month to get one where we want it.
Right.
So we do have a motion from Rick for one of each of the speed signs.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I already have, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Rob is at second.
Okay, so we have that strained out. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing as how there were some um, split decisions on this, I would ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Hovarder.
No.
Susie.
Yes.
Deaton, no. Spyher.
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Reiber?
No.
Okay, motion carried. We, we still have a second item out there from the agenda if anyone would like to provide a motion.
I would move approval. Trying to get back to it real fast.
No problem.
Run too far. Move approval of the quote from the Sheriff's Department for five units plus the data storage price and installation totaling twenty-nine thousand.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
We have to get all these items? We couldn't get, try just two, see what goes up with two?
If, if you would prefer a, a lower number, if somebody wanted to make that motion, um.
Right now we have a motion for all five.
Right now we have a, a motion.
And a second.
Treasurer Hunt and a second for all five, so we will actually, we will hold a vote on that. Um, and if we determine that that didn't work and we need a vote for a lesser number, we will do that. Uh, so moving forward, I would ask the clerk for a roll call again, please.
Hovarder.
No.
Susie.
Yes.
Deaton, no. Hunt?
Yes.
Reiber?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Spyher?
Yes. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and information.
Thank you Lieutenant.
And like I said, whenever you, if the township wanted to have more conversation, reach out to myself or the sheriff and we'd be more than willing to come and sit down with you and talk about statistics and what things look like for the township and what the township would be looking for.
We will absolutely, once our survey results come in and we see what the public, uh, what they're eyeballing, we will absolutely reach out and.
All right. Thank you all for your time. If you have any more follow-up questions or anything, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do.
Okay, thank you.
Be safe.
And uh, real quick, we probably should have put it in the motion, but the LPR cameras will come from Fund one oh one nine hundred and nine seven zero, zero zero zero. And the speed signs will come from one oh one nine hundred nine seven five zero zero zero. Those are from the general fund and those are capital expenditure, uh, capital outlay funds, um, separated by the dollar amount of the purchases. Moving on, we have action item number four, which is a presentation and request to receive and place on file the fiscal year April first, twenty twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five township audit as presented by Manor Custerison. And we have Tyler Baker here this evening to
Nailed it.
Provide information and answer your questions.
Thanks, it's probably about one in eight chance that people say it correctly, so thank you. Um, hi, my name's Tyler Baker, I'm a senior manager at Manor Custerison. Um, what we're going to go over this evening is the presentation on the twenty-five fiscal year audit. Um, you should have a number of things in front of you that I dropped off, one of which being the spiral bound report. This is the official audit report um, that you would have gotten in, in PDF form previously, but I also brought you a bound report. There will be this um, letter that we will also go over. This is the required board communication letter. And then what will be going off of is this PowerPoint presentation, which is just a regurgitation and in a more concise presentation. Um, none of it's new, it's all from the, the actual bound report. So if we have any other specific questions, we can go into that at any point either. But for ease of presentation, we'll be going over the PowerPoint. Um, first of all, I want to thank um, Ken and his team from PHP that assists in the audit preparation process as well as um, Kelly and Robin and their team for the process, um, and availability and effort throughout it. We understand your guys' jobs um, as a township don't stop when we show up. Um, and so we appreciate um, availability and responsiveness and we'll see that in the um, governance letter. But when documents were requested, questions asked, we received those documents and answers um, in a reasonable amount of time, which is what we like to report to the board, because that's not always the case. You'd be surprised. Uh, without further ado, we'll get going and feel free um, to yell out if you guys have any questions as we go. We'll go over the auditor's report, we're going to go over the statement of net position, go over some pension information, um, focus on the general fund, balance sheet and income statement, and then some five-year trend graphs as well. So the auditor's report is pages one and two of the bound report. Um, the audit objective, um, a purpose of the audit is to express an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. The purpose is not to detect fraud or express an opinion on the internal controls. Uh, in the very first paragraph of the auditor's report, it states our opinion, which says in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all um, material respects um, over all of the opinion units um, as an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we as independent auditors can provide. And that is on the set of financial statements as a whole, that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that opinion is on the financial statements as a whole. Responsibilities of management for the um, financial statements, so management's responsibility is on the preparation and fair, uh, in accordance with GAAP, uh, design, implementation and maintenance of internal controls as well as the fraud detection, deterrence and prevention. As I mentioned earlier, the auditor's responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our auditing procedures. We're going to get into some numbers now. So this first page is a statement of net position. Um, so for um, a little bit of uh, background, government financial statements have two sets of financial statements that are included in the one rebound report. What you're used to seeing would be maybe budget to actual, which would be on the modified accrual basis. So that's what we'll look at in the general fund, which is current resource based. So items of long-term nature, capital outlay, as you just mentioned, that's expense. So that's shown as an outflow in your income statement. What we're looking at on here puts those items of long-term nature, debt, bonds on the balance sheet. So this is the full accrual, this is what like a nonprofit or a business may look like. What we'll look at later is the modified accrual, which debt payments would be an expense rather than a debt on the balance sheet. So just a little bit of background on why these two statements we'll look at here in the next couple pages look different. So this is the net position, items of long-term nature on, are on the balance sheet. Um, and this is as of a point in time, so this is as of your fiscal year end, which is March thirty- And this is as of a point in time, so this is as of your fiscal year end, which is March 31st. Total assets highlighted there were just over eighty-one point three million. This is township as a whole, your governmental funds, your business-type funds, including joint ventures. Increased from seventy-nine point seven million or approximately one point six million increase. Majority of that, there was some classification in the balance sheet, but the majority of that driver is due to an increase in the investment in joint ventures from thirty-two point seven million to thirty-four million, which is your percentage of the MHOG, GO, Water and Sewer, and the Brighton Fire Authority. So those make up that three amounts. Total liabilities, the next highlighted, two-thirds of the way down, just under nine point eight million. Prior year was seven point three million, so an increase of approximately two point four. That's due to a new bond during fiscal year twenty-five of just under two point eight million. Net payments made during the current year for current year amortization. So that's the cause of that increase, total liabilities. The next page is pension. So this is a ten-year requirement in your required supplementary information in regards to your pension plan, your defined benefit pension plan. That far-left column is the most recent information. So because you're in MERS, it's a cost-sharing, or excuse me, a multiple employer plan. And so the last fiscal year is twelve thirty-one of twenty-four is the most recent information that we go off of, which is why it says twenty-four, not your fiscal year of twenty-five. So just clarification on that. So that left header shows a total pension liability of just over a million dollars with a net position or assets in the plan of just under seven hundred and eighty thousand, with an employer's net pension liability of approximately two hundred and forty-four thousand, or an increase of twenty-eight thousand, taking your funded percentage at approximately seventy-six percent. It depends on the size of entity, how many plans, but state average is seventy-three percent approximately for all size of entities around the state. So you guys are a little bit above that state average. Next page is what I mentioned earlier, where this is on the modified accrual basis. So this is what you're, the numbers you're more used to seeing when you're looking at budget numbers and actual revenues and expenses. So this is the general fund budgetary comparison schedule. So towards the top, total revenues. Final budget was anticipated at six point four five million dollars. Actual came in at six point three with a variance of approximately one point six percent. Prior year revenues were six point one million, increase of approximately two hundred and eighty-three thousand, with the majority of that being increase in tax base related. So that increase in four point six million, majority is due to that increase in tax base and revenues coming in. Total expenditures, two-thirds of the way down. Actual came in at just under four point four million. Prior year was four point one, or an increase in expenses of two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Anticipated expenditures approved in the final budget were four point six five million, with a positive variance or under budget of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for expenditures. Majority of that is due to payroll and related, spread across a number of departments, but majority of that increase is due to payroll and related activity. Net change in fund balance at the bottom there, anticipated using up fund balance of two hundred and eighty thousand as a final budget. Actual was using up one hundred and twenty-three thousand for a positive variance from the final budget of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Next page is the balance sheet. So this is as of a point in time where the income statement is revenues and expenses throughout the whole year. This is again as of one particular point in time. We'll have three thirty-one, that left column is the general fund. Total assets, just under six point four million, increased four hundred and seventy-six thousand or approximately eight percent. Majority of this is due to just an increase in cash flow and an increase in net income in the fund, as we'll see on the next page. Total liabilities, just under one point nine million. Prior year was one point seven for that increase in a hundred and ninety-five thousand. Majority of that is the increase in the due-to-others, which is timing of collections due to, for connection fees, MHOG and GO, is a majority of that increase in liabilities with the reciprocal increase in assets. Towards the bottom there, you can see that unassigned fund balance, which is basically funds that have not been spoken for currently or sitting in the other categories of non-spendable, restricted, or committed, or assigned. Prior year was two point seven, current year is three point four million. Next page shows the income statement for the general fund as a whole. Similar, slightly different numbers. This general fund combines a couple funds together, which is why you'll see some slight differences for reporting. But total revenue, six point three million. Prior year is six point two, again, majority of that increase is due to property taxes. Total expenditures, up four point six from four point three, as we mentioned earlier. And then the main thing below, that net increase in fund balance, increasing two hundred and eighty-one thousand, taking your fund balance from four point one nine million in the general fund at the beginning of the year to four point four eight million at the end of the year for the general fund. And what we'll see on the next page kind of puts it a little bit more in graph form or a trend over the last five years. And so this is, this is the general fund as a whole for revenues and other financing sources, which would be proceeds or transfers in. Other financing uses would be transfers outs and other type of expenditures that are not in the normal operations, which is what those different distinctions are. Blue is the revenues or inflows, red's being expenditures, and then green being fund balance. Revenues over expenditures, as you can see, slightly over all five years. And then what you generally would like to see, unless there's planned use of fund balance, which is also okay, is the slight increase in that green bar, which is fund balance. So that fund balance that you guys have slightly increases. What you don't generally like to see is large fluctuations. You would like to see that slight increase in revenue and tax base with your expenditures also slightly increasing, as you see there with that increase over those five years, with fund balancing slightly increasing each of the five. The next two pages I have are pie graphs, and this is as of just twenty-five. But it kind of shows where the majority of money comes from to be used by the township. So this first one is the general fund revenues and other finance sources, with the majority being the thirty-five percent, which is that red category, which is intergovernmental, which the vast majority is state-shared revenue. In that amount, there could be some grants depending on the year. And then you have the taxes, which is that top-left quadrant of twenty-five percent, which would be your tax base times your millage for your property taxes. So two majority comes from those areas. Percentage is slightly changed, but previously in the years prior, those are also your two largest funding sources. And then the next page is your expenditures and other financing uses. Same idea where percentages slightly change, but the large categories remain consistent, where your general government is forty percent, which includes a lot of different departments. And then the transfers out, which is that green category, as I mentioned before, for that other financing uses, is transfer out to capital projects funds, road improvement funds, and parks and wrecks to be used in those funds per budget. So that's the twenty-nine percent, that bottom-right green. That's what I have for you in the presentation. Any questions on the presentation before I go to the letter? Or the bound report?
Now, I'd like to thank Tyler and his team, as well as Ken Pelka and his team. The audit is always a stressful time, but you make it easier and your team does with coming in and be willing to work. I also want to thank a lot of the board members up here met with Ken Pelka prior to this, because there is a lot of information in here to take in. So I'm hopeful everyone got a lot out of that, because otherwise I think their heads would be spinning right now.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the GASB, which is what this reporting, does not stop their new pronouncements. And so we had one in the current year for GASB 101, which is compensated absences. We'll have future ones, which was going to change up basically everything in this report. Again, even though twenty years ago or so, they changed it at that point, and they were going to change it all. Luckily, there was enough public comment that said, why are we doing this? And they're not doing that. But next year and in future years, we'll explain what those differences look like. As an example, GASB 103 will require there to be explanations in the RSI, Required Supplementary Information, which is where budget to actual is shown, like I talked about. It will now require there to be explanations why original to final had significant changes and why final budget to actual has significant variances. So a thought as you're going through budget amendments to keep track of why, again, a lot of it's unknown at the time when you do original, but that will then be reported on why there were amendments that drastically changed from original to final budget, and then why actual to final budget is different in future years, not in this one.
Is there a dollar amount that they're going to consider as drastic?
So materiality is in all of the GASBs, which is in all of the financial also. I would start at ten percent generally, and then there is a dollar percent, there is a dollar, right? If something is a small department that changes fifteen percent, but it's a thousand dollars, that's a different story than a four-hundred-thousand-dollar variance that's nine percent, right? So there is some to it, but obviously budget amendments generally have explanations anyways as you go about discussing it. So just maintain that, I guess, is the main thought as we currently sit.
Ken just used my crystal ball wasn't clear when we projected it.
That will honestly will be, that will be a lot of the explanations, because you don't know. A new grant will come in that you didn't know you were going to get, and that drastically changes revenue and expenses. Right, there will be unfortunately some of those. Yep, yep. So the last thing is this letter here, which is required board communication letter, or our governance letter. And so what this does is, this is a required communication from the auditors to the board. At the top, it discusses significant audit matters, which would be, as you note one line down, it talks about accounting estimates. So these are estimates that we are making aware to the board that are inherently included in the bound report, such as how long a building or a capital asset will be used. There's industry standards, but again, it's inherently an estimate, and so that's disclosed. Pension information, again, you don't really know what your total liabilities will be. A lot of things can change through the course of a pension, including the deferred outflows and inflows related to those pension liability. And so that's included in here. Compensated absences, and then lease receivables, which is the present value of future leases received. So again, this just discloses that there inherently is, to the reader and to governance, estimates included in the financial statements. Page two discusses if we were to have any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. If you were to look at that, it notes that we did not have any significant difficulties in dealing with the management. That's where I mentioned before, if we requested something and didn't get it from them or couldn't get an adequate answer, that would be disclosed in here. Any uncorrected misstatements, there weren't any if we felt a journal entry should be made and management said no, that would be disclosed in here. Or any other disagreements with management or consultation of other independent accountants. Long story short, this is a boilerplate letter that says we didn't have any disagreements with management, but is required to be communicated to the board, which is why I'm talking to you guys about it tonight. Any questions on that letter? It's a lot, it'll put you right to sleep.
Nope.
Good job.
You guys do a good job of making it understandable.
Yeah, the benefit of going to virtual presentations for a couple years made it kind of a necessity to have this presentation. So we weren't saying like, page twelve, now forty-five, and then you gotta spend time flipping through it. This has been good for both parties.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, I will entertain a motion on action item number four.
Yeah, so as required by law, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the fiscal year April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025 township audit.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Up next is action item number five, which is the consideration of a request for approval of a park development plan and grant support proposal not to exceed ten thousand dollars from K2 Environmental Consulting for the seventy-seven acre township-owned property on Brighton Road, east of Chilson Road from Parks and Recreation Fund, planning engineering line item 208-751-934-006. Spencer Kellum from K2 is here to answer our questions and provide you with any information you would like.
Yeah, hello everyone, thanks for the time and appreciate the opportunity to put the proposal together. I was asked to come up with a proposal on how to manage and how to go forward with this parcel over on Brighton Road. Had the opportunity to meet with Kevin and Kelly back in July and then had a brief walk around the property. It looks like a pretty neat place. Went away and came back with this proposal. And so again, happy to hear you answer any questions. I'm happy to give background on who I am and how I ended up presenting this to you guys as a consultant. So I grew up in Michigan. I worked for about five years as the Deputy Director of the Stewardship Network, which is a conservation organization based out of Ann Arbor. And we did a lot of community-based restoration work throughout the Great Lakes region. So I've done a fair amount of grant writing, forest management plans, these types of things on multiple properties. And so did that for a good while. And then my wife and I moved over to the UK for a couple years, for two years, and lived in North Wales. And I was working as a consultant there doing corporate nature strategies, so kind of looking more from a global corporate value chain sort of perspective. How do we move and act a bit lighter on the land? And then we moved back to the Arishil, so I live down in Lenox County in Cambridge Township. And saw a need locally for natural resource expertise and kind of conservation planning. I've worked a lot with private landowners on forest management and habitat stewardship, that type of thing. So formed K2 Environmental Consulting to deliver that service. And I've worked with a couple townships locally. And like I said, I was kind of referred to come, to propose on what we might do with this property here. And so, let me just check my notes here real quick. Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think the kind of two pieces that I heard were potentially grant funding to do whatever it is we might want to do, and then a desire to keep the park quite natural, not do any sort of heavy-handed, you know, people have talked about not wanting bike parks, that sort of thing, which is fine. I include a lot of that sort of information, because depending on the grant funding source you go to, they often have different requirements or suggestions for the type of thing. So for example, one of the possible funders would be the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, and they have a, like a park development category. So it's things like infrastructure that you would see in a more recreation-oriented park. That said, there's obviously scope to, you know, turn that part down. And I think the other piece that I would like to bring to the foreground is I also included in this proposal at least one community workshop. I found that it's really important, particularly in the natural resources and the environment, to engage the community, the people that are around, around the property are most likely to be interacting with it. Often, they have really good background information on ecology, the types of animals, plants and animals that are in the area. They're also usually biggest supporters for the work and for the environment and that. So I do want to make sure to foreground that as, that's a, that's a part in the process that I see as pretty integral to understand and hear what people actually want, whether or not, you know, whether or not it goes through or gets funded or however that comes out, we, yeah, just remains to be seen. But I think that's really an important piece to really garner that community. But I think that's really an important piece to really garner that community support for, you know, developing and stewarding a park. So again, I'm happy to answer questions. I think the proposal I laid, I can kind of walk through, walk through what the proposal is and what I'm kind of mean by it. So I think the, kind of the introductory piece, you know, is two parts. One part is developing a plan. So you don't, you don't build a house with a plan, you don't put in roads without putting together a plan. It's difficult to redevelop or rehabitat, restore an environment without a plan because it is a typically a multi-year process where you're treating invasive species, you're following up with herbicides as appropriate, perhaps prescribed fire is another tool in the toolbox for habitat restoration, that sort of thing. So the, the planning side of it is a huge piece, which is, at the end of this, you know, we may or may not get funded, you know, we don't know how that's gonna go. But the, you'd have a plan for what could be done with this property. So typically, you know, it would outline, you know, you'll see in the, in there is the, the plan component. So like the site conditions would kind of lay out the habitats, the conditions there, the soil conditions, the, you know, that parcel has a pretty rich history, it sounds like, with, with mining and, and forest activities, forestry activities on it. So thinking that, thinking that through, defining it, characterizing that so that we know what's there and can, yeah, to be basically descriptive of what, what's there on the site. And then the other component would be the, the habitat restoration planning side. So where do we want this to go? You can't just get your lawnmower out there and mow it. I mean, you could, but you'd probably break your lawnmower. There's likely to be needed some heavier equipment to do some of the chainsawing of the tree stumps, that sort of thing, or maybe a forestry mulching mower, this sort of thing. And I think part of that, the restoration planning side of it is, is really understanding and, and understanding the site, understanding the habitats that are there, deciding where we want them to go and then basically putting in the, the plan, the management techniques that would be needed to get there. So the multi-year sort of thing. And there's a, the other part of the component was the recreation assets planning. So things like thinking about whether playgrounds, bike parks, disc golf. I mean, I'm hearing that that's not very, not, not wanted, but it's there. We want to think about it.
Let me ask real quick before we get off of that. I mean, the discussions at the table have been all along that it's just low key, no, nothing big. If we put playground in there, we get a grant, are we gonna have to do something?
So the plan that I'm proposing, that I'm proposing here could include a playground.
Could.
Could. So but the grant, if we were to apply for a grant, receive funding for said playground that's in the plan, yes, we would have to put it in because we got the money to put the playground in. We don't, wouldn't have to put that into a grant application, if that makes sense. So it's, and that's where I was kind of like, there's, depending on which is the most, which I think is the most competitive or most appropriate funding source, there are things that sometimes are required. So I'm thinking of, this is more of a private land ones, but they, they sometimes require public hunting access as a stipulation, a condition of receiving the grant.
I think, I think the tone of the, of most people that have had discussions about this is to get it back to just being a natural condition with trees, some trails to walk through, not paved, not, you know, just some trails. Simplified approach to it all. Right now, we have a giant mess on our hands there.
People can't even walk in it.
They can't even walk in it. And, and I know that, that nature will take its way and so forth, but there are some invasive species in there that are gonna stifle trees that are growing and so forth. So what do you envision that needs to be done to just get it back to a clean, natural state where trees can grow, a walking path, path through it? What, what does that look like to you?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the simple version is you can get a rent a forestry mulching mower, run around. If you don't treat what the stumps, like the, the autumn olive, that sort of thing, they'll come back. So run enough forestry mulching mower, establishing a trail system and treating the trail, you know, treating the stumps in, in the trail. You've got, it's now accessible. That can be done quite easily. The areas that have been logged likely have some regeneration, both of native trees and non-desirable invasives. Treating those, depending on how far along they're growing, it might be, again, this mulching mower just going pretty, pretty heavy with that equipment and then coming back at the appropriate time and doing a foliar spray of the invasive respouts. So you can, and then part of this for me as well is recognizing. So I, I stopped through there and I was seeing tall grass prairie species, so grasses, big blue stem, that sort of thing. That's not a forest. And so the management of the continuing those, those species is a bit of a different man, habitat management than it would be for trying to regrow a forest there. So there's nuances, my basic point is you've got a forest block over here and you've got maybe a prairie block over there. The techniques and the management of what happens where and when and how is part of what this planning would articulate, I guess, if that makes sense. So you, okay, we've got a ten acres of this is a, is a regenerating forest and we want to, we want it to continue to regenerate and we want it to do it well. Well, hey, let's run the mulching mower through there, save the trees that we want to save, do some spot treatments and then let it grow. We might have to come back in five years and do a little bit more. But that's different than, you know, an area that's got some really nice prairie grasses. You wouldn't, you wouldn't do that.
So this ten thousand dollar proposal is for you to develop a plan on how you would go about doing this?
Yep, so it'd be, you could think of it as a seventy-five hundred of it is to develop basically a forest management plan. So it articulates the existing conditions, it articulates management units, areas of similar habitat, and then would outline a proposed multi-year kind of treatment of the species or, you know, treatment plan, whether that's, you know, the mulching mower with the foliar spray to follow up, perhaps trees being planted in if that's, if that's warranted. And then the, the remainder of the budget was to provide grant support. So the plan, you'll end up at the end of this with a plan for, yeah, this would be awesome. This would be a great way to redo, rejuvenate this, this parcel. It's gonna take time, it's gonna take money to do the rejuvenation, to do the restoration. The grant would hopefully provide some of that funding. A grant, it doesn't have to be, you know, there's federal or state, there's local, there's a lot of different funding sources. And one of the things that I've done with other clients is support the board and support the township in kind of continuing and helping find funding through, there's, you know, there's a lot of different options for conservation funding through local grants. There's often, you know, it's a very, seems like a fairly affluent place and you might find citizens that might be interested in supporting this type of work, that, that sort of thing.
So in your development of this plan, it's gonna include proposed costs? So that we can
Yeah, it'd be
Put that data
Yep.
In front of people who might offer grants?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the, it would, yes, in short, yes, it would be timeline of activities, rough budget numbers to do those activities. And so, you know, it might be year one, we need, spitballing here, thirty thousand dollars to do X, Y, and Z. Year two, it might be twenty thousand, so we could put that into either a grant proposal or approach a funder with that sort of information. So again, I kind of try to come back to the, the building a house analogy. You know, you've got all the different pieces that go into building a house. You put together the plan, you get the budget for the flooring and the framing and all that. And then spending that money and executing that has to happen in a series of steps.
In your analogy, you're the architect.
Perfect, yep.
Okay.
Thank you so much for sending your resume over and your conversation on the phone this afternoon. One thing that I wanted to get from you that I didn't see was I needed to know your projects that you requested versus the amount that was actually awarded. Did you, are you at ninety percent? Are you at fifty percent? I mean, what's your
Are you talking like success rate for grants?
Correct.
That's a really hard one. Fifty fifty? But it, it's, this is apples to oranges, right? So I put together a lot of proposals for very targeted, like treat fragmites in, in the Lake Erie wetland that didn't get funded, for example. And that's, it's a very specific thing versus a, you know, a planning and development sort of, so.
So this resume that you sent me earlier, this was successful stories.
Yeah.
How does, let's see here, Manchester Township, what you did over there versus what you're doing here? How does that, how is it the same and how is it different?
So Manchester Township, it's very similar. So they hired me to do a planning project. So I did a, I helped them identify parcels that had high natural, natural habitat features. And they're considering at the local level, a local, a millage to do conservation easement. So what I did, that's the, that's the funding side. So what I did is give them the data, give them the plan. And then they are now, so they are now going forward with perhaps putting together a millage for their, their residents to vote on, to fund it. And so that's, so the similarities are, it's, it's, the planning side is quite similar.
But it's not a grant, it's
It's not a grant, yeah, so that, I didn't get the grant support side of that proposal, so.
And, and generally, when you get a grant, this is my concern. You said that there is stipulations or ties. If we get a grant from somewhere and they say, look, it, we'll give you this money, but you have to include a water park, right? Or a child's like play structure or something. This is something that we either have to do or deny the grant on, correct? And if we turn the grant down, I mean, is there any obligation? We have a right to say yes or no to it, or once we apply for it and we receive it, we have to take it?
No, you don't. And then the thing I would say upfront is like, we, I would discuss all that in advance of submitting a grant so that the vetting of a grant to apply to, like, you want to, we want to make sure that it's an appropriate grant and it doesn't have stipulations that aren't, that we don't want to follow along with. So, yeah, I think they, you know, there's a pretty good chance
So you say that your success rate is fifty fifty. What is your
Spitballing though.
Okay, so what is your last successful one? How long ago is that? Because I saw that there has been no work in twenty twenty-four. Your last project was in the UK before the Manchester
Yeah, so I, twenty twenty-four, I was basically moving back to the, to the US. So I was working in the corporate space then, so I wasn't doing much grant stuff.
Okay.
So that was more submit a proposal to a company and they hired me as a consultant. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, I was involved with, so that's the one I was working with the Stewardship Network based out of Ann Arbor. And we, and it's a national nonprofit that does a fair amount of grant support for conservation and stewardship folks. And there was a couple, couple of grants that I was involved with there.
Okay.
So I didn't include those ones because I felt like they, you know, I could help with a grant and write a grant and help manage a grant, but it doesn't actually communicate the like planning and the articulating of arguing and how to get the grant, if that makes sense. So, yeah, I, I wasn't as involved in the implementation side of those grants, so, yeah.
What, what kind of money are you thinking that it's gonna cost to rehabilitate that?
I mean, thirty thousand dollars a year? I'm not, I, I, it'll be, so it's eighty, seventy-seven acres. If we need to hire a forestry mulching mower, they're anywhere from a couple thousand bucks an acre. I'm not good at math off the top of my head. So seventy, you know, seventy-seven times three thousand.
Have you, have you, did you walk the property?
I walked the bit of the perimeter. I didn't
Okay.
Didn't venture off.
Virtually non-traversable.
Yeah.
So those logs, we're gonna have to get those hauled away, right? You can't leave those probably.
I would hope we could.
Or a big bonfire.
I mean, that's where we can get into, I mean, honestly, to, to speak to the, kind of the stewardship side of my work, like, you know, there's a lot of, there can be a lot of community support for helping restore and manage a place. So something like, you know, we've got all these logs, let's have a bonfire, let's have, like, you know, the township could host a work day sort of thing where we haul these things, have a big bonfire and drink apple cider, that sort of, that sort of thing. I think there's, I've been a part of and I'm aware of a lot of kind of community-supported habitat restoration and stewardship, which I think this parcel is really well positioned for. It seems to be surrounded by people who care, which is, which is a huge thing.
Well, people used to hunt on that all the time.
Hunting, yep, yep. And I, you know, there's, I mean, you get, if you get the hunters involved, they'd, they'd be interested in, you know, growing, growing game and that sort of thing.
The township owns this property?
Yes.
And it is zoned Parks and Rec? What is it zoned?
I think it's commercial. Is it commercial?
No.
I mean, not commercial. Agricultural?
I'd say it's probably a
I believe it is.
I think it's a low density residential, but I can look it up.
They picked this up from the DNR last year.
That's what I, my brain was saying is Parks and Rec, which just seemed like a natural jump, but I don't know if that's right.
DNR is supposed to be taking care of our natural resources and clear cut the place and leave it laying around. Nice job.
Some mistakes were made.
And I will say that
in addition to speaking to our, our local representative, I have spoken, spoken
Spoken.
Spekens Deutsch. To Jason Wolford. And he has also expressed an interest in helping us reach our goals with this property. Knowing the background, we're forwarding him some information on exactly what happened here and, and how that went on and, and, you know, he'll be able to coordinate with Spencer and formulate a plan to kind of get it through where it needs to go.
I could reach out to SEMCOG and see what assistance they might be able to offer.
It says LDR, Low Density Residential.
So the property is zoned Low Density Residential.
But it's not buildable because of the water problem.
Correct. We, we could rez, we could rezone it to Parks and Rec if we chose to develop it. Right now, it's not really an active park. There's not good access to it. There's not good parking for it. I know there are folks that park there and hunt on the property, but it's not, it's not historically been really used for active recreation. So if we were going to do something other than sort of create it as just a natural space, then we likely would want to look at a rezoning for the property.
That's what I would
How many, is there any wetlands on that property?
There is not.
Okay.
There are lots of valleys and hills, areas that were formerly mined. So there's a lot of very steep slopes on portions of the property, but it is not wet.
So, so I'm gonna go back to where I started the meeting with almost, right? You gotta have a plan, right? And this is just my thinking. Let's see the possibilities, and this is me, okay? But the possibility is gonna be clear it, leave it alone, clear it, put a low-impact dirt path. When I say clear it, I'm not talking clear cut.
I get you.
Control what's, control what's in there, make it so that it is, pardon me? What's that?
Clean it up.
Clean it up a little bit, give it back to the people that, that would be interested in using that land. And I'm not talking, I don't want a campground there, you know, nothing like that. I don't want a little playscape there. This is me talking. I just want to get, get it back under control, clean it up right there. And if, if getting, if, if getting you to come up with the plan, maybe some estimates, a grant, but I don't know how much we can hang our hat on a grant if we just say, yeah, we just want to return it back to its natural state it used to be five years ago or ten years ago, if the state of Michigan gives two rips about that or whoever we're gonna grant from.
Well, we get the state of Michigan who says, oops, sorry, we messed you up. We'll, we'll pay to clean it up.
That'll be all right.
That's what Jason was basically talking about.
That'd be all right.
That'd be great.
I think for ten thousand dollars, though, this is pretty high risk at a fifty fifty shot. I say that we make a motion to table this and talk about this at a future date.
I know, we could start investigating this on our own.
So ju, just know that you, if you're going to get a grant for next fiscal year, it needs to be in, in February.
Okay.
So, you know, we're now coming up on our next meeting is in October. If you want to give Spencer time to actually put together a well-thought-out plan, you might want to get him going on it. And I, I don't necessarily know that we've rushed into this in any way, shape, or form.
With regard to the investigating, like the site surveys and investigations that you need to perform?
Yep.
Everything changes in the winter time in Michigan. So is it more critical that you get in before fall? So is it more critical that you get in before fall happens and everything changes? And now you have like Arctic-looking stuff instead of what's there right now?
Yeah, it'd be helpful to see things, to do an assessment during the growing season. So while things are still alive before they senness. And I'd likely be back in the winter time as well, too, so. But definitely, I'm just, yeah, it would be good to get in there before, before all the leaves fall off.
Oh, very soon.
Be helpful.
So on your presentation, I would be more comfortable if on page two, where it says possible assets, if you remove playground, bike park, disc golf.
Yep.
And strictly left walking, hiking, biking paths.
Yep, okay.
And I don't like where it says mine considerations, but that's kind of just me.
Yeah.
And then we would be able to get a copy of your results that you found?
Yeah, so what, what I would do is go out and walk all over the place, take a note, you know, basically do a habitat characterization, try to figure out generalized patterns of what's growing where. Put it on a map, define it, and then talk through some of the, the, you know, the management units, the habitat objectives, so think, you know, this is oak kickery, this is a little prairie, that sort of stuff. What, what are they? And then talk a bit about some of the, you know, the threats, so the invasive species, my, to the mine considerations, like, I don't know what I'm going to find. You know, it sounds like there's been a lot of earth moving in there. So just thinking that, thinking that through a post-mining landscape lens. So looking at it, just, just to kind of say, like, we're not trying to mine it. We're trying to understand the ecology that's come up since it's been mined, if that makes sense. So the, the assessment would be part of this planning, so, yeah.
Do we have any, do we have any questions on the questionnaire that asks along the vein of, hey, you've got forty vacant acres, what do you want to do with it?
Most of it has to do with how people want to preserve the open character of Genoa Township, what sorts of things they would want us to do, one of which is, do they want us to buy more land? Or do they want us to purchase development rights? You know, how, how, and are they willing to fund that if they want that to happen?
A little more near taxes, we can buy it and not develop it and just keep it green. Because I, you know, I, I get here in the background here, it says, Genoa Township expressed interest in redeveloping the Brighton Road as a community park.
That could have been my interpretation of what I've been, I mean, that's, that's words I wrote.
That never came from my mouth. All right, and then it says, we would like to redevelop the site as a natural asset for the community. If that means cleaning it up and providing a simple walking path with no damage, I could agree with that, but a, a natural asset for the community, not a splash pad.
No.
Right?
Nope.
And then it says articulate goals and objectives for the park. This plan would give an overview of existing conditions, articulate goals and objectives for the park, and outline implementation activities. So again, I mean, I, I just, I want to make sure that, you know, the board is clear. And my personal opinion is one of seven votes is what we talked about is just minimal disturbance, clean it up. If it's impassable to humans and it used to be impassable to hunt on, okay, put it back into hunting condition and leave.
Yeah. Don't get hung up on the word park, because you could emphasize.
I'm sorry, it's, it's multiple times in there.
I know, but that's still what it is, it's a.
It's still Genoa Township land for the residents.
Call the forest, call whatever you want, doesn't matter, but it's the same, you know, don't get hung up on the word park.
Brighton Rack off of Bauer Road is considered a park and it has mostly an equestrian trail through the woods. But it is a park.
I would still like to see a few additional estimates, though. I think we're going off of this one estimate for a grant, no offense to you or anything, but we're given ten thousand dollars for a fifty-fifty shot at getting a grant. So we're just, I, I, it's just, to me, it's a little high risk. If we could get a couple other people to give their professional opinion, I would really feel a little bit more comfortable in voting on this. This is why I'm asking, I made a motion to table this discussion for a future. It could be next board meeting, it could be the one after that. We have time. I just, I really don't see a need, immediate need for a rush to have this taken care of right now.
And I hear what you're saying, I can hear exactly what you're saying. The payment schedule here says seventy-five hundred bucks. That's without application for a grant.
Correct.
Right? So I, I mean, just to hear the plan, see what some concepts are, is the seventy-five hundred bucks. And whether we decide to proceed with, together with a, a grant, let's go after that for this, is a different, I mean, does that, does that change your mind at all?
Actually, it doesn't even do that, because it's twenty-five hundred to get the information. He's got another twenty-five hundred to complete the community workshop. And then another twenty-five hundred to deliver the whole plan. So you've got three stages there.
And let me ask real quick, how important is that twenty-five hundred for this community workshop?
What is that anyway?
So I, the number twenty-five hundred is just breaking out a payment schedule, so.
Okay.
Just kind of milestones. I think, like I was saying earlier, I, I do think a community workshop is a pretty important piece. Like I said, to just generate the local, you know, there's people, there's citizens, there's residents around there who, who care. And hearing that and incorporating what can be into the plan, I think is really important.
But the workshop itself doesn't cost twenty-five hundred?
No, 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 I just, that's, I just needed to come up with a payment schedule.
So the seven thousand five hundred is everything prior to grant application?
Assessment, that's the plan, that's the workshop. And then the twenty-five hundred is, let's go look for some funding for this.
I mean, and if I look at your monthly schedule, I mean, you do have a lot of data you're compiling throughout the months, I mean, developing the GIS database.
Yep.
You're doing the habitat and landscape assessment, we can't do that. You know, so there is.
What about the Livingston County Land Conservancy? Maybe they have somebody on staff.
So they would prefer the property to be, so I've spoken with them. They would prefer the property to be a little more cleaned up if we were to just give, you know, they're going to want the property. So if, if you're going to go with the land conservancy, you're going to give them the property. I don't know. I wasn't ready to go that step just yet.
No, I don't agree with that, I'm not saying that. I thought maybe they just would help, they could help us manage it initially.
Yeah, they got enough trouble trying to keep track of what they've already been given. Funding is an issue, there is no two ways about it. Because of what was done here on this property in the past and mistakes that were recently made, you may have an inside track to getting some state funding to clean up the mess that they made.
I know, but they made it. What makes you think they're going to be on board with fixing it?
The person in charge of the purse strings is actually located very close to Genoa Township, so that may or may not help us out. We have two representatives that have expressed an interest in steering the, the property through. But again, without a plan, you know, they're not just going to hand you money and say, see if you can do something with this. You have to have somebody that has experience in this field. This isn't like picking a lawn service or a landscaper where you throw open the yellow pages and there's a hundred of them out there. So I will tell you that we came, Spencer came highly recommended to us by Pangaea Environmental, who has been extremely successful in, in doing some things with the, preventing some gravel mines and, and things like that. So the proprietor is very familiar with how the state operates. He has had a lot of success there and he just mentioned that Spencer is similarly connected at the state level to where he may have a good chance of having success as well. Nothing's a guarantee.
And to go back to Rick's question to him about being the architect of this. You need to have an architect, like you have an idea, and then you have an architect put it all down, and then you move forward with things. So it's like a necessary step in the process.
Right.
What's going to be the cost for that? Is it only going to be the ten thousand?
Seventy-five hundred, if that's just one architect.
Seventy-five hundred, if you don't go to the grant support and.
If you don't want to try for the grant or you want to try for the grant on your own, which I have been highly recommended against, you can not approve the twenty-five hundred and just go with putting the plan together. But it was made very clear to me that you should have somebody experienced in grant writing and grant seeking guiding you if you are not so inclined, which I don't believe any of us are.
Would you be good with, if we did the seventy-five hundred and then down the road, potentially added the twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, and that, that actually, yeah, that's fine, makes sense to me. Because I, I feel like these things are sequential and I think when we get to the point where we're looking at grants, it's going to make sense.
He knows what he's looking at.
Right, there, there are, and the other thing I'll say is I've also worked with other, I've worked with other grant writers. It's always helpful to have, I don't know, township has somebody who does grants, that sort of thing. So it is helpful to have multiple eyes on, on this sort of thing, so.
There was a gentleman in the front row that left a little bit ago, because this meeting has taken quite a while. He lives on a street that was directly affected by this clear-cut devastation. And he said that his daughter does work in the grant finding and grant writing business. And kind of offered his assistance up to us.
Get a second opinion, let's get some more people.
Well, it's, you would need to do the seventy-five hundred dollar part first so that we would have data and information collected so that we can use that and request a grant. So maybe we don't use Spencer for finding a grant. We still need an architect for this, and that's that guy.
If I can just add just a, a comment, the, the current budget for this fiscal year did include fifty thousand dollars for Brighton Road property cleanup. So whether there's grant money or not involved, this board did allocate funds towards cleaning up this property. I think it's, you know, important that we.
Follow through.
And, well, and, and know what our path forward is, right? We have that pile of money sitting there, but we don't know the best way to approach cleaning up this property. I don't necessarily want to go in with a forestry mulcher and destroy all of the sprout trees that are coming up, right? I do think this is a very complicated site because of what the DNR did and how they left it. And I don't think it's going to be as simple as us just hiring a guy with a mulcher to go out there and mow some trails. I think it needs a little bit more attention than that to really properly restore it to the, to something usable and functional.
Maybe we should get one more opinion?
Well, and, and the other point was, somebody asked the question, we have fifty thousand dollars in a budget for Brighton Road cleanup. That might get you a couple acres, right?
We don't know, without the plan, we, we do not know.
It ain't going to get you seventy-seven acres.
Well, that was for this year and we still need to come up with a plan for it. So we set aside fifty thousand bucks for it and for seventy-five hundred bucks, we can start moving forward with developing a plan that'll tell us what we need to do and how we might execute it.
When we initially set off with the plan, we had no idea the level of invasive species that had grown in, and, you know, thorns, that gets unique, it's impassable. We were unaware that it had gotten that way that quickly. In the back of my head, I was thinking, jeez, it'd be really nice to get some residents in here to get this firewood before it all goes to waste, because there's a lot of beautiful hardwood just sitting there in piles waiting to rot into nothingness. And I, you know, what happened is a shame, but letting it go for not would be even worse. So it would be nice to get to some of that stuff ahead of time, before that happens.
And as he said, it matters that things get done before fall and winter.
So there is a little bit of a time consideration. So I've done some research, or a lot of research, I'm the one that put this together. If you want to do your own research, have at her. But, you know, I've, I've put in the time, I've talked to the people that, you know, do this kind of thing, and that's how we've ended up here.
So Janine did make a motion to table this.
And I did not hear a second.
That was not a motion.
That was not a motion?
I made a motion to table this.
I didn't hear a second.
Candy seconded it.
Okay.
I did second it earlier.
I did, I did not.
Let's just have out till the next meeting. Let, let us.
What can we do, I mean, I would, I would say, okay.
I don't want to say next meeting, I just want to say for a future date because, so we have time to do additional research. There's no rush to get this project. We've had this, we've had this property for a year now. It's not a big rush to get it over and done with and we have to, we have to carefully plan and think, so.
Okay.
Well, I can see, I can see a delay. But between now and four months from now, what would the activity look like? Because he's saying we need fall, we've got winter coming in. So even if it's somebody besides Spencer, they're going to want to come in and.
During the growing season.
They're going to want to come in and see it in its full glory, right? So how do we arrange for, I mean, what do we do for the next four months or three months or two months?
Well, I just wanted to get someone else's opinion and maybe a quote.
Just a second quote?
I think that we ought to be able to get that, shouldn't we?
So the supervisor's already checked out on that and checked multiple sources, and this is what he's come up with. So you're just saying that you're not satisfied, you're just not, you're saying you're not satisfied with this one? Is that what you're saying?
It's a pretty niche thing.
Well, I guess this is it.
It's, it's not going to be free to have somebody do this. So you're deciding between free and seven thousand five hundred dollars at this point. If you want to write the grant yourself, I do recommend it, but.
Without a plan?
Well, yeah, if you. I've been, it's been made clear to me that if you come with no plan, good luck. No money for you. So somebody is going to have to come up with your plan. If you question whether or not Spencer was the right guy, I have made the determination that he is. But you're free to question me.
We've heard your opinion.
Right, absolutely.
Can we make a motion, can we answer my motion?
Yep, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
For the record, I don't think Patty heard it, I know, I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear it.
So can we just redo a motion and support? For the record.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the.
Consideration.
Consideration of requests for approval of park development plan and grant support for the seventy-seven acre parcel off of Chilton Road. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
Just discussion, by using the word postpone, it leaves it open-ended, is that a good idea?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm guessing we all need the clerk to give us a roll call on this one as well. So a yes vote is postponing the decision on the property. A no vote is not postponing the decision on the property.
Yes to postpone?
What's that?
You said yes to postpone?
Yes is a postpone, no is a, we are not interested in postponing.
Are we closed for discussion or one more point? Are we closed for discussion?
We should be, but you know what, Bill?
No.
You're late, John.
Okay, never mind.
No, we're not looking to shut down discussion.
You know, we, we, we've got a survey coming up and people are going to decide on what they want to do with a piece of vacant land. You said that that was going to be a question. This is not vacant.
This parcel's not on there, but, you know.
Yeah, and we've had a couple of workshops already where we've had residents, and I was unable to attend those. I was unable to attend any of them. And, you know, I, I just wonder if, if this particular incident was put in front of the residents, what, what would they have said? Okay, this is a tangled mess. It's going to be an upfront cost and it's going to be a gift that just keeps on giving, right? And so I'm, I'm interested in seeing what the, the benefit to postpone, I'm interested in seeing what the survey comes back with, you know, because it's going to be a precious thing.
There is no specific survey question to this parcel, because we had already determined based on feedback, we set aside budget money to get started on the project.
Okay.
With nobody voicing opposition to that. What I will say is a lot of wheels have been set in motion to line up support at the state level to hopefully get something behind the project. So any postponement now, you are not going to present in February. Highly unlikely, highly unlikely. So you will now go to the following fiscal year, so you have another year afterward.
Little bit of the timeline, him getting the information we need to do any architectural work. January is when it needs to be presented to Jason and to Ann and, and have it ready for February. So we need this information in hand for them to see what we can get out of the state. So that's.
That's if you guys are rushing it to get it done this year. Yeah, it, it's vacant land, it's. Yeah, it, it's, it's vacant land, it's not top priority, in my opinion.
Hey, we had a motion, we had a second.
Yep, so we'll ask for a roll call vote, and just keeping in mind, yes is postponement.
No is do it now. Or, or don't delay it.
Yeah, no, well, no, no sends us back to the drawing board.
Sends us back to this consideration.
It does not send us back to the drawing board, no is not agreeing to postpone it at this moment. Yes is agreeing to postpone it.
Got it.
Okay.
Make that clear.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Hunt?
No.
Ryber?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Hovarder?
Yes.
Susie?
No.
Deaton, yes, Spiker?
No.
Now we're back to the original consideration.
And I will entertain a motion on that consideration.
I will move for the approval of the park development plan and grant support proposal not to exceed ten thousand dollars from K2 Environmental Consulting for the seventy-seven acre township-owned property on Brighton Road, east of Chilson Road for, from Parks and Recs Fund and Planning Engineering Line Item 208751934006.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
Discussion, please.
Okay.
We had kicked around only approving the seven thousand five hundred right now. Once we get to a certain point, then coming back and doing the two thousand five hundred for the grant. Do we wanna consider doing that? Or you can leave your motion at ten thousand dollars.
The reason I left it the way it was, part of the discussion, is that the whole purpose for this is to get to the grant phase to it all anyway. Um, so that we can get money to fund this thing. And I think we're just, it's like, um, we built the frame, we're just not gonna put the utilities in. I, you know, I, I'm trying to use your analogy.
She just stated that we have fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that's not gonna give you.
So passing this motion, or, you know, approving this motion, does not commit us to ten thousand dollars. It commits us to not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Right.
So if we, so, if we choose to stop at seventy-five hundred.
You can.
Then we can.
Right, but the motion does allow that to continue if we want to do it. Cause we're gonna have to come back, when he comes back with the final development plan, then we're gonna decide whether we wanna move forward with the grant proposal.
Thank you.
Can I recommend just some additional language that the proposal be revised to reflect the discussion this evening? There was some talk about.
Right.
Changing the wording a little bit to make sure that it was clear that this was for more of a natural development. So I would just recommend that we make that part of the motion.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got that, Patty.
And to take out the possible assets, a playground, bike path, and disco.
Yeah, use the word reclaim.
The recreational asset plan, we wanna remove that. And not the whole thing, because walking, hiking, biking trails is part of it, so.
Yep.
Those three things.
Okay, so, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? May I get a roll call, please, Clerk Deaton? Um, a yes vote is to proceed with the plan, a no vote is to not proceed with the plan.
Walker?
Yes.
Ryber?
No.
Hunt?
Yes.
Deaton, no, Spiker?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Hovarder?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on, action item number six is a request for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Spencer, sorry, we're trying to speed up here, huh? This is a request for approval of the Form of Escrow Deposit Agreement.
No.
What?
What's that?
Can we take five?
You kidding me?
No, we're almost done.
Okay, let's, let's continue on.
Let's speed it up.
My apologies.
I think we're, I think we're on the downhill slope.
We are.
Uh, so this is the request for approval of the Form of Escrow Deposit Agreement and Resolution Number 5E, Fifth Amendment to the Pine Creek Ridge Road Improvement Project Resolution Confirming the Special Assessment Role and Resolution Authorizing Partial Deficence of Special Assessment Bonds Series 2024 Limited Tax General Obligation, Reduction of Special Assessments and Related Actions. Did I get it all?
Think so.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that I need to go through this, given the late hour, essentially Cliff Notes version is the Pine Creek project came in way below budget. Um, unfortunately, we sold bonds for it, which has created um a very difficult situation for us to sort of navigate our way out of. Um, Robin and I have been working very closely with um public finance professionals and bond counsel to figure out a path forward. Um, this resolution will provide us that, it will provide that we send refunds to people that have already paid off the assessments, give folks back their money, and then essentially a hold on an escrow to the money that will be necessary to pay the bonds off. Um, so it gets us out of this situation of having collected more money than we need.
Shock, we're giving money back.
Well, we should.
I, I, I made the greatest effort I could to try to figure out how to take credit for it, but unfortunately it was just a slight overestimate by the road commission.
You know, when, when construction costs come in low, it's always a wonderful thing. When you sell bonds and they come through this horribly low, I wasn't even close, it really complicates things. But like Kelly said, working with the bonding attorneys and the financial management company, we've got there.
Okay.
And Robin and Kelly have worked very hard on this, and this was a, a project that wasn't really their doing. Um, none of us are road construction specialists, so there was really no way for us to realize that that estimate was that high. In the past, they've done excellent, you know, sometimes they're a little high, but um this, this one just, of all ones to be really high on, this one might not have been the best one to pick, but so be it.
The one saving grace on this is because it's Pine Creek subdivision, we knew we were gonna get a lot of payoffs. So we opened up a window for people to come in and make prepayments to save the interest, and we got eighty-six payoffs. So we didn't have to borrow money on that amount, so.
What's the average refund look like?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars?
Yep.
Is there interest on that to them as well, or?
No, cause they prepaid.
They prepaid?
Yep.
Okay, okay. That's awesome.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution SE, Fifth Amendment to the Pine Creek Ridge Road Improvement Project Resolution Confirming the Special Assessment Role and Resolution Authorizing Partial Deficence, I don't have my glasses, of Special Assessment Bonds Series 2024 Limited Tax General Obligation, Reduction of Special Assessments and Related Actions.
I'll second that, and it's not SE, it's 5E.
She didn't have her glasses, she admitted that right away.
I don't have my glasses, I'm serious.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Okay, Susie?
Yes.
Hovarder?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Ryber?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Spiker?
Yes.
Deaton, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on, action item number seven is a request for the introduction of Proposed Ordinance Number Z2506 and to set the meeting date for considering the proposed ordinance for adoption before the Township Board on Monday, October 6, 2025. The request involves consideration of zoning ordinance text amendments to Article 21 entitled Administration and Enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, this is a procedural step. One of the um requirements of being a charter township is that we must introduce an ordinance before it is adopted. So we are asking for you to introduce this this evening um for your consideration at the next meeting. Um, this has been recommended for approval by our Planning Commission and is going to Livingston County Planning for their review later this week. We look forward to presenting it to you at the next meeting.
In, in summary, um, uh, this is a modification of posting requirements for rezoning, special land use, and uh site condo applications, uh, and also a measure to allow the board to uh institute a moratorium by resolution. Um, the uh correct motion for this, if somebody wants to make one, is on page one hundred and forty-three.
I have it.
I.
You ready for the motion?
I suppose, I, I am ready for the motion.
I'm a missing trustee, so.
I'd have to take a, we might have to take a timeout, but.
He did ask nicely.
He did.
This just, this doesn't actually need a roll call vote, it's at the next meeting that the ordinance requires a roll call vote, so. I'm comfortable with the board moving forward on uh just a voice vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move to introduce Proposed Ordinance Number Z2506 and set a meeting date to consider adoption before the Township Board meeting on Monday, October 6, 2025 for the purpose of consideration of the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 21 Administrative and Enforcement.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
Yes, the only discussion is uh the ordinance, um, I, I think the ordinance needs to have a text revision. It's got the dimensions of the sign and the orientation of the sign backwards.
I believe Amy said we would address that prior to.
Okay.
The hearing.
Okay.
At the October 6 meeting.
Other than that, I'm good.
Further discussion? Uh, all right, I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? And we have one non-present.
All right, let's go to the next one. I worked all day, I gotta work all day tomorrow too, I gotta go.
So do I.
Okay, action item number eight is the consideration of a request for approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement for Cooperative Paid Assessment Intern Mentoring and Training Program between Livingston County, Genoa Charter Township, Heartland Township, and the City of Brighton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, this is a program that we have utilized here in the township in the past. Um, it is an excellent program that allows us to um work cooperatively with the county and some other of our local jurisdictions um to get an assessing intern, um, it helps train that assessing intern, and also helps us get some tasks completed in the office. Um, so we're looking forward to the board's approval of this. Um, there is money in the budget allocated for this position, so this would just continue that arrangement that we've had previously.
This is within the assessor's budget.
Do they, they need help over there, huh?
Yes.
I'd just like to emphasize, this is an excellent program, and we've had a lot of great younger adults come through the system and getting into becoming an assessor, and it's a wonderful program.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion on action item number eight.
I'd move approval of the request um of the, to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement for Cooperative Paid Assessment Intern.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Action item number nine is the consideration of a request for approval of budget amendments to fund 202 SAD Roads and Lakes for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, these are budget amendments to our Special Assessment District Fund. Um, some of them are cleanup items, some of them are directly the result of projects approved by this board. Um, the first one is a cleanup item, we showed a revenue transfer in from the general fund um that was not also supported by the general fund, so we didn't show that transfer out of general fund. We don't need that amount, so I'm recommending that that be set to zero. Um, the Lakewood Knoll Special Assessment District also came in low and was reduced by this board earlier this year. So I'm asking for fund amendments to uh reflect that decrease and also the refunds that were issued to those residents. Um, there was a small error in the Genoa Estates recently approved uh SAD principal revenue, so I'm asking for that to be revised. Um, and then also there are changes requested for the Timber Green Project, which was approved by this board at their last meeting, at your last meeting, um, to set up those new funds within the 202 fund. Also, just a note that this will leave, these amendments will leave a ending fund balance in this account of just under five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I do have another special assessment project sort of in the works right now, that's around three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So um as this fund gets lower, it may be something the board will need to um choose to put some money into it if we wanna continue to do these road projects.
Nice, nice job on all this, keeping it all involved.
Thank you.
Okay, any general discussion, any questions?
I do have a question real quick, the Lake Ed, I'm sorry, the Edwin Drive stuff, that, did you already take all that out of the um SAD on this, on this thing? Did we, did we do that last meeting, or do we, do we need to include Edwin Drive?
So Edwin Drive um needs to stay on this particular one, because that was a summer tax, that was this summer's tax. So we collected uh revenue from them for this year. That will then get their, what's left of that will get paid, refunds will be issued. It likely may not change this fund 202.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question.
Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion on action item number nine.
I'll move to approve a budget amendment to fund 202 SAD Road and Lakes for fiscal 2025-26 budget as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Moving on, two discussion items. Discussion item number 10 is a discussion of ordinance amendments. This was, uh, at our last meeting, a resident presented um some ordinance suggestions to us. We have since received them, um, as my, my most stated, staff has some concerns. So we need to provide staff with some guidance uh as to how to proceed.
So I am, I am in possession of the entire ordinance book, I have one. So I took the time to go through our ordinance versus what was being presented. In the um zoning ordinance for the uh thirteen point seven oh one for the above-ground storage and below-ground storage tanks, basically what she did is she took, she copied our ordinance, but she added um measured in direct line from nearest edge of storage tank to nearest edge of water source or well. That's the only thing that got added to it. Now, I don't know what that ends up implying for us, but that's all she had done to that, to our existing ordinance, was added under section thirteen oh seven oh two, below-ground fuel, fuel tank storage. She just added the uh measured in direct line to nearest edge of storage sand container to nearest edge of water source or well. So I think that's kinda like a, you got it here, cause it's like this, they want this one measured from here to here, you know, type thing, so. I don't know if that's a big deal or not, I don't know if staff have any.
That distance being significantly greater than state law, um, that is very likely to be unenforceable. As it has been brought to my attention.
Right, and she also has on here three hundred gallon capacity, there is no storage containers with three hundred gallon capacity longer, it's five hundred minimum. So that also doesn't fly right now.
You also may want to consider um some sort of clarification between fuel storage, uh, like um petrol and propane, because we do have a number of residents that do use propane for their gas needs at their residences. Um, and you, you may not want them to get caught up in whatever ordinance you decide to enact.
So her proposal on uh noise ordinance, I printed off the Genoa noise, noise ordinance uh that we have already in place, which I think is sufficient to what's going on, and what. which I think is sufficient to what's going on, and what was proposed, uh, which was totally unenforceable, is noise of any sound or vibration considered unwanted or unpleasant by a person or persons hearing it. Whoa.
There, there are.
Very encompassing.
There are some significant concerns on the enforceability of that one. It's very hard to enforce the ones that do actually have a very specific level.
So hers has got all this, um, uh, just, you know, creation of vibration or loud or continuous noise unreasonably disturbing another person.
It's pretty arbitrary.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, you can't do anything with that.
Well, I, I was looking at this as well, and, um, she wants to reduce the seventy decibel, decibels to fifty from ten P M. to seven A M., and I looked up what is fifty decimals, and they are saying it's a normal conversation.
Yeah.
Dishwashers, the sound of a TV, a refrigerator.
Yeah.
And rainfall is fifty decimals.
Yeah.
Like, how, how could we enforce?
It's, 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 uh.
That, that part I didn't understand, and, I mean, how, how do you control if somebody's gonna have fireworks or dogs barking? I think that this is, this is gonna be very hard to enforce.
Right, and, and.
Nor do I want to.
No.
If you want to look at ours.
On the noise ordinance.
This is what ours already is, but, uh, ours is, I think, fairly comprehensive and also, uh, is hard to enforce even as well as that one's put together, so.
We have had some difficulties very recently on the noise ordinance, so making it more difficult, um, might be counterproductive.
And, and I think there's an ulterior motive in the way that's being presented anyway for, for a very targeted situation that, uh, doesn't affect township as a whole properly.
And I do want to add to it that there is the, she proposed the ethics ordinance. We already have something in our rules and regulations about ethics.
I do.
So I don't believe that we need to make official ordinance because it's already in our township rules.
I agree.
It's also a state, there, there is a portion of the wording in state law.
Right.
Yep.
Yep. So that's my two cents on that one.
Do we, as a board, I mean, we're not taking a voting action, just trying to gauge interest, do we as a board, um, want to have legal or staff take a look at these and make comments to provide that we have looked at them, or are you comfortable?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I agree with no, but if, if everybody feels that we should get a second professional opinion, we could, but I think it's a waste of money.
I, I don't.
I agree.
Here's what, this, this is a citizen that has put a lot of obviously time and effort behind this, and this is what we encourage. Right, this, this is a person representing the will of at least themselves. And they went out on a limb, and they've probably put tons of hours into doing this right here, and, and to just reject it, I do agree that there are, there are definitely some vague terms, and there's some very, very restrictive terms when you say any, that, that's pretty, it's any, right? Um, so I, I do agree that there's, in my opinion, needs to be some language clarification, some cleanup right here. I don't know that I would, I would just outright reject it.
Though we already have, we already have ordinances.
I understand, we have ordinances in there, and she's not saying, here's a new ordinance, here's a modi, a proposed modification.
And I noted the one, what she had noted on there, you know, it, it does imply, we can't have a noise ordinance that goes down to fifty decimals, I mean.
The rain is too loud.
Well, I, I agree with that, but the question was, do we want to have legal or staff investigate this and give us their personal opinion on what they, what they view this as? Is it enforceable? Is it legal?
So, so full disclosure, when these came in, I was instantly concerned with a few things that I saw. I did send them to the township attorney already and asked him to take a look at them. He has generated some informal opinions for me, some things for staff to look at, but before I spent any more time on it, I really felt like it was important that I talk to the board and find out if you want us to dig into that at all. So I do have at least a baseline of information, um, and staff could go through that and sort of tr- try to at least windle it down to the, the parts of it that the attorney is comfortable with us moving forward on, and then see if the board wants to go forward on the items that are not of concern.
Okay.
Which would sort of be how I would recommend approaching it.
Okay. I, I would be okay with that. I mean, if there's, if there's meat here on the bones that is useful, and we're not violating any law, and it's a good idea to supplement what we already might have, you know, we're not gods, we can't think of everything. There's, there could be items in here that could, oh yeah, a light bulb moment. So I would, I would be interested, just me, I would be interested in having that research, if that's what you want to call it done.
So then, the only other piece of guidance I think would be helpful for staff would be we, we are in the process of amending the master plan, right? So typically, um, at this point, we would sort of identify in the ordinance, these are, these are changes we want to make, like, when we get to the point of making changes to the ordinance, um, and so I guess I would, it would help if there was a little more guidance from the board, like, look at them, take steps towards implementing them today, or it's okay for us to sort of identify these changes and look at them as part of a comprehensive ordinance update that would occur after the master plan is done.
I agree with that.
I like that.
With the comprehensive redo? Absolutely, we'll be open to all suggestions. Um, I don't know that, that any of these require, uh, we gotta do it now. You know, the, the tree ordinance was a little more pressing, you know, um, the, the ordinance we're gonna consider on October sixth was a little more of a time-sensitive issue. I do think that these particular items could be addressed when we address the entire ordinance book to implement our master plan.
I would go with that. Uh, good, 'cause I know that there are some things right now that the Planning Commission's working on because Amy is going through and doing some updates to existing ordinances, so it, you'd be chasing, you know, so I, I would, I would say that that's good.
Go in that file of that ordinance, as we review it, we'll look at that in comparison.
Yeah. This was mostly, we, we, we want our residents to know that we're listening, so we've, we got the ordinance suggestions. We've done a light evaluation, it sounds like the board would at least, uh, entertain a little more research into this, seeing if we can implement them into our, our total ordinance package when that time comes. This is the way I understood our discussion to have progressed.
Yep.
And it would be nice to provide answers, uh, to our resident.
Yes.
If they are asked.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Okay.
Correspondence, uh, so we, we did have one, um, and, you know, I, in a perfect world, uh, this person would have been able to come and speak at call to the public, uh, and express, uh, a concern, and it was about the LPR cameras, and some of it was that we should have a presentation, uh, by the sheriff if we're gonna consider those, so I think that one corrected itself. I, I thought I had put that in my memo, but apparently I did not. Um, the decision to not read that, I, I don't really want us, put us in a position where we're reading letters from people at call to the public. Correspondences for those, so, uh, that is why that decision was made, but, um, that, that was the brief summary. Um, without further, um, inspection, this person was not in favor of the, the cameras. We, we since received further input. I, I don't know if that would have changed any minds or not, I cannot make that inception, so, um.
Yes, I believe all the board members did receive that email earlier today, so I, I'm aware that they.
That's right, I, I believe you all did see that email, I, that's right, I forgot about that, so, um, I just was not comfortable with, uh, people emailing in call to the public stuff for us to read at call to the public. I, I don't think that's how that's supposed to proceed. That could open up a very big Pandora's box. So, uh, any other correspondence, Kelly?
Um, I will let our clerk, uh, talk about the one item in correspondence.
So, um, Becky and I were working together and created the new, um, certificate to take to the Brighton Senior Center for the free, um, membership. Um, I, this is the voucher, and, um.
With a gold seal and all?
I put the gold seal, and if you notice at the bottom, I, we, we put it on paper that when you go to make a copy, it voids it. So this is a picture of, that Kelly took with her camera, or her phone, to get a, a gist of the, what the certificate looks like.
Wow.
But I tried to scan a copy, even if you scan an email, it says that it is not authorized.
Wow.
Should it say on there somewhere that it's a twenty-five dollar value?
Because they have different levels of membership?
Yeah, it does.
Oh, basic membership, okay.
So it's basic membership.
Yeah, it's the, it's the basic membership. We, what we did was, we put the, um, expiration date, 'cause we are trying it for, um, the, till July first, I think it was when it was, June thirtieth it expires.
Yeah.
June thirtieth.
And then, um, we created, uh, Becky's created a, um, a spreadsheet, and we're going to verify the residence addresses and put them in the computer system and keep track of how many people. Uh, we've already issued two, so.
Nice. Good.
So is Becky logging into the assessor's software program to verify the address?
Yeah, well, she's asking for copies of driver's licenses and, um, logging into B S and A software and, uh, making sure that they are residents of Genoa.
Good.
I had another resident say that she wanted to pick one up for her sister today, and I told her that that was not possible, that she had to come and, and I had to verify her identity.
Very good.
Yeah.
Good job, Janine.
Are we gonna do this for the Howell people at Heppra? Cause they're charging twenty-five bucks too.
So we, we haven't brought that yet. Um, that is something we can bring at a future meeting, or, uh, Heartland as well, we do have some Heartland residents.
Are they twenty-five?
We are Heartlanders.
Yeah, they're twenty-five too.
Well, Howell people don't pay anything at Heppra, right?
Oh, no, they do. They're charging.
They're paying the.
If a non-Howell schools.
They're ninety.
If a non-Howell schools person wants to join Howell, there is a way to do that, uh, it's significantly more than what we've approved for the Brighton, so I don't know how that would work into things.
And if you're in Howell schools, you still have to pay.
I think they're charging those Howell schools.
If, if you're in Howell schools, you automatically, you know, you're paying for it in your taxes.
Right, in your millage, yeah.
But if you're a Genoa resident in Brighton schools, y- y- you don't have the same privilege, cause you're not paying for it.
Will you check on them for me?
I'm gonna ask, cause I think they're charging them. Mike, she sent me something.
Because all Howell school residents now pay a millage rate on the tax bill.
I know, but I think they're still charging them.
So they should not be paying, but.
I will inquire.
Will you check?
Okay, yeah, that would be.
I think, I think they're charging them still.
That is, that is not the way it was explained to me by the director, but that would be interesting to know.
Well, it's a confusing system. It's hard to navigate, because.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So this was, this is kind of our test program, to give the clerk some time to, to design the implementation and, and make sure it works. If we want to expand it at a future date, we can. Um, I, I did get one bit of correspondence from a resident who was upset that we didn't make it retroactive on to July first, and I, you know, I apologize for that, but the cost to, to make it retroactive would probably be more than the, the cost to, to provide this service. Unfortunately, the sending out checks and reimbursements and stuff is, 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 is not easy, so we're, we're trying to make this, I, I wish we could have gotten it done ahead of the July first, but this is just the way it kind of timed out.
I think it's, I think it's a nice gesture, and thank you for that, and that's what should happen.
We all, uh, we all definitely supported the, the seniors in helping them out and.
So the program is up and running, spread the news.
Excellent.
And, uh, we can issue, um, the vouchers.
All right.
Cool.
Any member updates from other boards that we serve?
CBA board meeting is tomorrow, we only have one item on the agenda. Um, should go pretty quickly and easily, so, nothing going on right now there.
Okay.
Planning Commission Board, uh, we were looking at some of my aforementioned, um, ordinance updates. We're not sure yet if we're gonna have a meeting coming up. It may just be, uh, part two of the discussion, it's, uh, regarding woodlands and wetlands. Amy's, Amy's trying to get rid of some of the loopholes, to, to be able to make sure that we can keep things more preserved, protect, protect our wetlands.
If you don't have any action items on your agenda right now.
It, no, it's just discussion. Our last meeting was just a hundred percent discussion, what do you think we ought to be changing here? So she went back with a couple of things, it's still pretty vague, and it's still kind of new. Um, and then our training opportunities for citizen enrichment training. So everybody should have got the proposed calendar of each training event. Um, Lieutenant, uh, Young was looking for, are you still interested in coffee with a cop? I said, yep, and he said, are you looking at weekdays? And I said, yep, right during business hours. So I would like to get back with him, I guess, from staff here, a weekday and a timeframe. You know, whether it be, uh, Tuesday, you know, from noon to four, I assume that we would want somebody here, the, the offices open here for public to come into the building, cause this is where it would be, it'd be at the Township Hall.
Absolutely.
So I'm looking for, and I, I can discuss with him, hey, can we set this up to occur every month, or once every quarter? Just have an officer, he would have somebody come in for a couple of hours, and then maybe tag team with another officer to come in with a couple of hours so that they can get back on doing what they're, and this is, uh, you're looking puzzled, Rick, this is a.
I was thinking coffee at the cop, that'd be a morning thing in my mind, but.
He's just looking for a time?
And donuts.
Maybe it could be eight to, eight to noon?
Yeah.
Right?
And I was, I was just reflecting back in my mind when he says that there's not enough cops and they'd be off the streets when they do stuff like this.
But I, but I, I, I think that at least some other people here on the board, so that would just be a cool.
I think they might send, send the desk jockeys whenever they do that. I don't know that they pull anyone off the road, but it'll be a good question to ask.
Yeah, I doubt they lose a patrol for that.
So, so what, what day of the week?
We're pretty important.
The day of the week and timeframe?
Kelly keeps track of the, uh, and, oh, I'm sorry, and Kathleen, uh, keeps track of the rental for the, for this room. We'd have to check with them.
Okay. Uh, real quick, Bill, uh, did I receive correct feedback that the, uh, tree ordinance was sent back for a little more review?
Yeah, there was, there was a couple things. There was a couple things.
So we're working on it, but, um.
Oh, okay.
The, the clock is starting over. Um, has to go back, went back for some review.
Okay.
Um, and then my last question, still regarding this training. Uh, we proposed the schedule, he's accepted the schedule, he wanted a modification, I said, that's gonna not be a problem. It was about the Houses of Worship, uh, security assessment, and he said, that's kind of on-site with, with each individual church. It's not something we do at your place. I said, okay, add one of these in place of it. So how, and then, uh, our first, uh, plan, the first proposed date was October twenty-eighth, I think, is gonna be the fourth Monday of every month. So how do we get it set up and communicated to the public that this is now live?
Just like we do with our, you know, with, well, we'll, we'll have to have a memo on the next thing and actually approve it.
Okay.
But it'll be a, you know, action item at the next meeting. Um, and then we'll get going on the app and socials and all that kind of good stuff, just like we do with our, you know, town halls and all that kind of good stuff.
All right, all right, the memo.
The only thing I noticed is the one that he said he'd switch because it was the church one.
Yeah.
That, that one is December twenty-second.
Yeah.
I think we should just eliminate that week altogether, cause people are busy with Christmas and probably wouldn't get much.
That one could be kind of light on attendance.
You would rather Christmas shop than attend an active shooter workshop around Christmas? You gotta be kidding me. Okay.
Well, he's switching those for CPR, which we're having a bunch of anyway, so. I just doubt that attendance would be very big.
Okay, no problem. I can ask him about that. Move it around.
Yeah, and then once it's approved, um, we get staff working on, for the Planning and Zoning for Everyone workshop, we created a Google, a Google signup, so people could enter in their information. That generated a spreadsheet of who was registered, so once we have the dates, we can start promoting it and creating the signup information.
Okay, thank you.
The workshop did go excellent. Um, I, I think world events and beautiful sunshiny day as we approached the coming of winter may have hampered turnout percentage more than we had hoped.
We had thirty-three, uh, residents.
That's still not bad.
So we had about a fifty percent no-show rate, which was kind of a bummer, however, we very much thank the thirty-three people who came. Um, everybody expressed some positivity that, uh, they really felt that it.
I don't know.
It was a nicely put-together workshop. I don't know how many, we haven't been able to see yet, how many watched online, or how many have viewed it.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Well, that was during, during this, twelve that watched it while it was live. I haven't gone back to see how many people have watched it since.
And I was one of those, so.
And hopefully a lot will, will come in and, and watch it at their leisure, or review parts and pieces here and there, so.
So it was also a, uh, a thirty-thousand-foot view of, of, of planning and zoning. Even though some of the people wanted to get into specifics of Genoa, the presenter, um, mentioned many times, um, I don't know how it is. I don't know how it is in Genoa, you know, she was just giving the overview type thing, and, and the people there, I think, wanted more Genoa-related stuff, and Kevin and I both said that, you know, Amy and Kelly could have probably put on a better workshop, but we needed that third party to present it that way, but it wasn't.
We can consider expounding on it, you know, if, if, you know, we wanted to. I, I know Amy and Kelly would both be more than happy to do a more Genoa-specific topic of planning and zoning, you know, if we decide to do that in the future.
And I think what it did for people is it's made them realize that this is not just a, well, just change it, you know, they saw the in-depth of how much stuff was required to be done to make it happen.
Process.
The process, and so it's probably, I'm guessing, I didn't talk to too many people afterwards, but it was probably overwhelming to some of them. For those of us who've gone through the system planner and so forth, it was kind of a refresher on some of those things and so forth, but it was.
It was a lot of information in a short period of time. The one thing I liked about the handout was it'll give you some words that you can Google search if you are so interested, and bring up information for you to peruse, you know, at your convenience, at your own speed, however you want to look into it, so I, I do feel the handouts were excellent.
I gave everyone a copy of the slides that were presented and the cheat sheet booklet that they gave on that as well.
I'll email to the board members all of the review sheets that folks handed in, they, they did scan those and send them to me, and I'll email them over, because it was, one of the questions on them was, you know, your knowledge coming into this, and then your knowledge after it, and I was really impressed with the responses that she got from people that filled out the after session. Lots of great comments on the back about how helpful it was, so I'll share that with the board, just so you can read and see what people's comments were.
So I know it's getting late, so I'll make this quick. Today was the last day to pay summer taxes, however, people can still pay at the township through February twenty-eighth, it's just a one percent penalty per month. We collected, my staff and I, twenty-eight and a half million dollars, unfortunately, we still have about three million to go, but out of all that collection, Genoa Township gets a whopping two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that, so.
And that doesn't include the stuff that's in the lockbox tonight and.
That is correct, and all the online payments today, we will post tomorrow, so.
So you'll be closer to ninety percent, you think?
Well, I'm confident we'll be over ninety percent tomorrow.
Nice, great job.
Awesome.
Todd, anything, or do you have anything further, Bill?
Nope.
Okay. Do you want to go anything, anything from BAF, or would you like me to?
You can do the BAF thing.
Okay, so each of you, I gave you a handout, this is a resolution that was passed by the Brighton Area Fire Authority at the last meeting last Thursday. Chief O'Brien is very disappointed in the emergency response communication system, and he laid out some, some issues he wants to see addressed. A number of our fellow municipalities are going to pass similar resolutions, rather than, than kind of just jump right in or haul off the diving board, I, I feel it would be beneficial to us, kind of like we did with Ken Polka, to maybe sit down with both chief and Commissioner Deaton as presidents here, and I spoke to Commissioner Fiani, and he expressed a willingness to do the same. I think we should be brought up to speed on a little more in-depth goings-on. Chief couldn't be here this evening, and I did not feel comfortable trying to relay the information he shared with us, I don't have that level of background after just seeing it for, you know, an hour and reading it a little bit before the, the meeting, so I, I do feel it's something we need to consider addressing, but we need to absolutely collect a little more information on what is going on, what is planned, you know.
Think we might have a resolution by the next meeting, or what?
I, that is the current plan, yes, yep.
The, the other topics, like, the other big topic on the BAF agenda was the update on the ninety-six westbound incident where a fire department vehicle was struck. Communication situations affected, negatively affected the ability of people to respond to that secondary accident where the fire department vehicle was struck. So that one, like, hit home.
Are they okay?
Yeah, he's out of the hospital, so the, it was an expedition to get rear-ended at speed, and it bent it up real bad, it takes a lot to bend up an expedition. Yeah, the, he said the driver's seat was laid flat because the impact was so great, and every airbag deployed from a rear-end collision.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
What was the story? She just wasn't paying attention?
That's, I don't, I don't know.
They, there, there may have been a medical, they're not sure.
Oh, that's terrible, poor guy.
So, there was afterward, obviously, but they were able to execute everybody from their vehicles, so that was good.
They're, they're making a plan, BAF is making a plan to get all their stuff, start moving out of the Station Thirty-One, so they can get on with the renovation project.
Where will they go?
Uh, the Brighton Township location.
Most of the operations will be moved to the Heiney Road station. A few of the staff will be dispersed a little bit, but the majority of, at least the admin, will be up in Heiney Road.
And then GoGov, our app people, they send out, like, an invoice early so that we can factor it into our budgeting and whatnot, and it showed an increase, like, when we got the app to begin with, I negotiated a lower price, they came in with an increase, I communicated with someone that I've established a rapport with there and negotiated for that original cost that I negotiated to be locked in for an additional three years.
We're not locked in.
But we're not locked in, we get one year at a time, but on paper, they have committed to locking in our discounted price for another three years.
If we renew, it's gonna be the same price, but we're only renewing for one year at a time, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you mu, very much for that, you know, I think that the app has been arousing success from the feedback I have received from people, so I stand corrected on my vote on that.
Okay.
And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh my goodness.
Kevin, you're gonna have to start trimming these down a little bit.
Three hours and fifteen minutes hurts.